I'll do this again. Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education's special meeting of Tuesday, April 16th, 2024, to order, and I'll be asking Jessica Turner to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome all. It's so nice to see so many faces here. I hope everyone had a chance to relax over spring break, and we are back at it tonight. Our first item is our equity item. We'll be hearing from Dr. Nicole. We have here, you guys are all here, for the NISBA Champions of Change recognition of the AMD students of the Genius Bar, so we're putting that at the top. We have Dr. Novar here, Allison Bacon, Liz Bly, and of course, all of our wonderful Genius Bar students. There'll be lots of clapping for you. And Mr. Patrick Longo, who's a member relations manager at NISBA, will say a few words. So I'd like to turn it over to Mary to turn it over to them.
Okay, so if I could have Dr. Novar, Liz Bly, and Allison Bacon, and to the mic to just talk a little bit about what this is, why, history, and highlight any students you choose to...
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. I have very few words, but just, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bly and Ms. Bacon and these amazing students and their families, because the Genius Bar has existed long before my time here at AMD, but I think it speaks very broadly to our student-driven leadership initiatives. And when we think about lifting our students' voices, when we think about relevant learning, this is just one of many examples, but it is the shining, I think, example from AMD. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bly and Ms. Bacon and their amazing student leaders.
Thank you all so much. We really appreciate you all being here and would love to have our students come on up, because it's really about them. It's not about Liz and I. We are very grateful that we were able to create something that was really organic. The students chose to be a part of it. This is not something that is recruited. All of our students really want to be a part of this group and have really done a lot of the leadership of what and how it's been run. So Liz, did you want to, or any of our students like to share a little about what they think?
If we can ask our students, so that we can get them on camera, if they come up over here, right?
Yeah. So we actually have sixth through 10th graders here. There were over 80 kids that we asked to come. Unfortunately, not all the families could make it tonight, but the 10th graders of the group that we started with, it was just a very organic thing that Allison and I one day were like, "Let's try something new and see what happens," and let them roll with it. And they rolled with it, and they've been amazing. We now have an after-school club. Kids come at recess, so it's been just a wonderful experience to get to know all different kids that maybe we wouldn't have gotten to know in another way.
One of my favorite things about this group is how diverse the group is in all aspects. We have students that have many different passions and many different interests in all different grade levels. And then, from the after-school program, they took the initiative, then turned it into a high school course. And just seeing when they're given the opportunity to choose what they want to do, how and what to run a program, the amazing things that have happened, because it really is what the students have chosen to do and the leadership that they all have. And when they are supported to make the choices that they feel are right, they do incredible things.
Okay, this works. It's been a long time since I was here. I came, the last time that I was here was eighth grade, and we were presenting just the very concept of what the Genius Bar was. I was tiny. I was a little shorter. But, and now, I'm in 10th grade. I'm a sophomore. I'm part of the science research program, and I was part of the first Genius Bar inter技tech support class in Austinang High School. Making this class was definitely an experience for all 12 students. We were able to get freshmen, sophomores, and seniors into the course, and we all worked towards not only structuring our own curriculum, but also deciding what we wanted to do with the tools that we had in order to serve our community. Eventually, the conclusion that we came to was that we would, there's a library, obviously. You all know that we have the Barnes Library, and there is, and we have our desk, and we have the maker space. So what we do is that some of us during some of our off periods will go down there and will be there as brief tech support, but we're also available through email and through communication with Dr. Sarr or Ms. Narcifer if teachers or administrators need help with technology. I'm currently helping Luis Iglesias create a form for students in order to report concussions for athletes, to make sure that they follow protocol and that they don't end up getting even more injured. And I think that's a really great thing, that we're actually able to get these skills and not only get that Level 1 Google for Education certification, but also actually help our community and get those community service hours. And I'm really grateful, obviously, for all the students who went into this, knowing that they wanted to make some sort of change and learn and had that drive. And I'm also just very grateful for the teachers, obviously. Ms. Bacon, Ms. Bly, Dr. Sarr, Ms. Narcifer, they all supported us, and also Michael Hannah, who helped us get credit for those Level 1 Google certifications and that we were able to have the class at all. And we were actually able to meet the middle schoolers, and it was a really nice experience, actually, getting to know them and present some of the presentations that we made, that we then presented in the Barnes Library to students about several topics. Some of them included just AI integration into classrooms. There were presentations on use of digital art tools and iPads in potentially the art department, and mine was just on how we created our curriculum. And it was really nice. I'm just extremely grateful. Thank you.
Hi. So I think the biggest part for me about the Genius Bar was how many doors it opened up. So in the eighth grade, I was one of the two kids who got Level 1 Google certified, and we were able to present at the ISTI conference this past summer. Yeah. And that was a really fun experience. We were able to talk to professionals, teachers around, from around the country. And it was something that I've obviously never experienced before, and it was really, a really good experience, because not only public speaking, but talking about something we created. And other teachers came up to us after and asked, "How do we implement this into our curriculum, into our school?" And I think that's big, because we've started now something that could be going on in countless schools across the country. And the continuation also to the high school, I think I was a part of, and I think that that really helped the kids in the middle school transition to high school, because now they know what curriculum they're going to be learning. They could get Google Level 2 certified. They can get Level 3 certified. There's so many different opportunities. And obviously, you have to thank Ms. Bacon and Ms. Bly for that, and then Dr. Sarr in the high school, because they've provided us with so many opportunities, and I'm beyond grateful for that.
Hi, I am Maya. The last time I was here, I was in 7th grade. I was a lot sure kind of like what Mia said. I'm currently a 9th grader at Austinang High School, and I was one of the 12 students in the first-ever Genius Bar inter技tech support class. And it was super amazing. I was one of two freshmen in that class, and all the students in that class were able to get Level 1 Google certified, and that was thanks to Michael Hannah, who was super helpful with getting our vouchers for that. And in the high school, it's super amazing that we get to continue this program, as the other two speakers have said, just that we started it here. I was part of the first group of just the couple of kids that decided to go to the library one day and create a tech support area. And yeah, that's really it. So just want to thank everyone, Ms. Bly, Ms. Bacon, Michael Hannah, Dr. Sarr, for teaching the class at the high school, Austinang High School staff, who actually made the class happen. And yeah.
Hi. I just really love Ms. Bly. I'm a big fan of Bly. I'm a big reader, not really as into tech, but being a part of Genius Bar really opened my eyes in seeing how adaptive reading can be done using technology. And it's just a great part of my academic life now. So thank you, Ms. Bly, for that.
It's the first time I've had to raise the mic in a while. I just want to start off by saying what they said. It's amazing that you guys are such fantastic speakers. You know, it's intimidating to speak in front of a board. It's intimidating to speak in public. And I just want to let you guys know, I'm retiring in eight years, so if you want to, you know, apply for my job, you're shown you can do it. I want, on behalf of the president, Sandy Ruffo, and our executive director, Bob Schneider, New York State School Board Association, like, thank the board for having us here tonight. Really appreciate it. We're here to recognize the district for the programming, and again, what they said. I think you guys understand the reason why we're recognizing them, but I just wanted to talk a little bit about the program that we're using to recognize the great things that are happening across the state. So this program is called Champions of Change, and we have criteria, and we have a committee that chooses these, but we don't publish the criteria. What we do is we have a news aggregate service that follows all the education news across the state, and it publishes those to our board members through an email each morning. And it helps them network. They really understand what's going on, and they learn from that, and they network with each other. And we are responsible for helping board members be the best board members they can be through training, advocacy, and providing information, like Eclipse. And so I actually, I scour Eclipse every morning, and on a quarterly basis, I collect all the great news stories and all the great things that you guys are doing across the state. We do see that media can tend to be sensationalist and a little bit negative. A lot of papers are going out of business, right? And it's just, you know, so sometimes it's hard to find these, but there's so much going on that we do find about 25 of these each quarter. And we do go to board meetings, and then we present this beautiful banner, which we're hoping you guys could display in the library for all to see. Champions of Change is really recognizing those who bring a positive change to the students, the staff, and their community. These guys have exemplified the meaning of change. And I want to commend the board and the districts. You know, our mission, really, we say, is to grow future leaders. And I actually was a director at a software company, and I did a review of an employee, and there's a leadership section, and he didn't fill it out. And I said, "Why didn't you fill this out?" And he said, "Well, I'm not a director or a manager like you." I said, "No, we all can be leaders, and we show how we lead every day." And these students and this staff really led the way. It's a fantastic program. One of the criteria I can tell you about is that we hope that by hearing about this, we take pictures, we post it on social media. So you realize, you get the exposure from the initial media article, and then us coming here, we post on social media, and sometimes it gets back in the press. And what we're looking for is others to emulate it. What we're so excited about with this program, I mean, all the things you said, again, was that you started in one school, and then you brought it to another school, right? We really feel like this is something others can emulate, and I hope they lead you by your example, that they actually create these programs. It's amazing what they've done, the social aspect of it, the technical aspect of it, helping teachers, helping to train. I don't think I started training people until I was about 26 years old, right? To have that experience is just unbelievable. Really great job. So I just wanted to display the banner to show everybody. I'm going to read. It says... So this was proud to print that, the Champions of Change banner to Austinang UFSD Board of Education for the Student Genius Bar. A round of applause again. Yeah, if we could take a picture, that'd be great, absolutely. Before I go, just again, I want to applaud the board and the district for all you guys do for the students, and thank you for your membership, and thank you again for having us here. Nice job. Thanks.
Thank you so much for coming, and thank you, everyone, for coming. I just, I want to express our pride and gratitude for students who feel empowered to pilot a new program like that, for teachers who feel inspired to take that seedling of an idea and nurture it into something so wonderful that's more than just a course, where they learn practical technical skills, but also a community, and to our administrators who say yes when great teachers come with great ideas. So thank you for everyone to, for putting those pieces of the puzzle together, because as we can see, it can make magic happen. If any other board members would like to speak, you're free to speak on that.
I'll echo the same. I just, you know, our students are so excited, and you see the energy that happens, but I just, I want to recognize all the parents and all the supports from our educators across the board. You all deserve a great round of applause. Like, this is a program that's really kind of changed in the district, really came from students, came from homes at the end of the day, and just really grateful for all your efforts in being here tonight. So I just think we should give all the students a nice big round of applause, and thank you all.
Anyone else? Okay, well, we will be moving along with our meeting. You're welcome to stay. However, if you'd like to... If you would like to make a graceful exit, that's fine, too, but we're going to be going on with our regular board agenda.
It's always great to thank NISBA for their support and coming in.
All right. Next up is our work session. Item 3.1 starts with our superintendent's update.
Okay, so first of all, I want to say best of luck to our Austinang High School engineering students who traveled today to Houston, Texas for the first competition. They qualified for the world's competitions last weekend, so which is outstanding. We are super excited for the team. We wish them well. And when I spent that hour with them and Ms. Langley, I was like, I wanted to go back and teach computer science at high school level. It was just a lot of fun. I told them all, I'm going to be living vicariously through them while they're down there. So we wish them well, and we thank a lot of the parents. Again, thank you, Frank, for that comment, because it doesn't happen without parent support. So we had a lot of volunteers, a lot of help with parents who chipped in to make this possible. So thank them all. On the same level of congratulations, we have three Claremont students, Tyler Kong, Yugad Maitri, and Weston Sumba, who won the first in mathematics competition, and they won $1,000, so, which is phenomenal. They are going to travel to Albany in June for an in-person tournament. So nothing makes a superintendent happier than getting requests in the district office, "How do we make these trips for kids work?" So again, super excited. For the 17th time, let me say it one more time, for the 17th time, Austinang has been named a best community for music education, our school district, by the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation. So congratulations, and I love the fact that they spike out music education and the school district as part of their national recognition. Along those same lines, 21 Austinang High School students earned gold, silver, and honorable mentions in the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Last week, we welcomed the United States Department of Education of English Language Acquisition and the New York State Office of Bilingual Education and World Languages to our schools. We were one of three districts in New York State selected to participate in this initiative, which aims to develop a toolkit to provide national guidance on dual-language programs. We were very, I want to thank Maria, first of all, for her leadership and organization for this, and Nancy also did an outstanding job. I was in communication with my friend and colleague, Ray Sanchez. I said, "Come on, Ray, you got to come, you got to come, you got to come, you got to come." And we were thrilled that he joined the panel for two hours and were able to give the history of the program and how it spoke to it. So I just couldn't have been prouder of Ray and Austinang and our entire team. So that's great. We certainly mentioned to them one, two, three, four, five times. Nothing happens without money, so we did make the plug to continue getting support. I want to give a huge congratulations to Austinang High School senior George Koke, who won this year's New York City Department of Environmental Protections Water Resources Art Contest, which is phenomenal, phenomenal. This week, Austinang High School is hosting the Protect Your Game event for this week. The focus on this, as someone who did this work for quite a while in a previous life, it's encouraging strong decision-making and healthy choices with and among our student athletes, picking healthy options when it comes to, you know, drugs or alcohol, but also in many different ways about wellness of spirit, wellness of mind, wellness of body, because when you have that, you are making good choices and you're doing what you need to do. You will perform as an athlete at your best level. You'll perform as a student, too, at your best level, but I love that focus. So this week, students have set up booths and awareness campaigns where they're sharing information and resources just to show the impact of all of that. Our Student Equity Fair took place this past weekend, and there we had student reps from our schools, and they participated in panel discussions, poster board presentations on the equity work that they have engaged in this year. I want to thank our students, the staff who attended, and of course, our Dr. Anne Dealey for her organization for this great event. Coming up, just the next event is super, super, really important. Our next board meeting is next week, but it's on a Tuesday. It's on next week. It's on Tuesday. Important for that, next week's board meeting is the board meeting where the Board of Education is required, under the law, to meet the guidelines and the requirements for the annual budget vote to adopt the 24-25 school district budget. So please keep that in mind, everybody. We are thrilled to have our annual prom drive, which takes place from April 15th to the April 30th. I love the level of dresses, shoes, suits, ties that can be collected to help support kids, and we'll have a prom pop-up shop. Anyone who wants to go through their closets has something that they can donate. It will, please drop off all goodies at 400 Executive Boulevard with our amazing Megan, and we're going to do this through our O Prime initiative. We have concert for the high school coming up, starting at 7:00 p.m. The orchestra is on April 24th. April 30th is the band. May 22nd is vocal night, so please mark your calendars. And how about the fact that the Roosevelt students are shining tomorrow night, April 17th, at 7:00 p.m., at the high school, onstage in a tribute to Charlie Brown? That's going to be absolutely adorable. I can say that. Adorable. We have our first-ever read-a-thon for Park and our Brookside students for the OECPTA, which is taking place April 15th to the 28th. Thanks for all who are participating. We have our 14th Annual Earth Day Festival, April 20th at 9:30 at Waterfront Park. And again, the Austinang Matters Flower Power Spring fundraiser has a beautiful selection of plants and flowers to brighten up our homes after a very dreary winter and lots of rain. So please visit the Austinang Matters. They're open with their event until May 15th. So that's my brief update before we launch into our budget conversation.
Yeah, the next thing on the item is continued budget discussions.
Okay, all right. So as many of you are aware, this meeting today is an extra meeting that we added to look at the board, our BOSI's budget, and to have a discussion about that. So we do have a brief overview and update for our public and for board members on where we are in our budget process. So first, as I mentioned in my update, next week's board meeting, next Tuesday night, April 23rd, is the date the board needs to adopt the budget. Of course, we will have a large formal presentation as part of that meeting, so we would like everyone to come, join us, either virtually or here in person in attendance. As many of you are all aware, the budget development season has been very, very challenging, and it's, Austinang is not alone, not alone in this situation. Any read of the NISBA clips, which I know many board members get on a daily basis, you will see that many school districts are in similar situations and facing similar challenges. There are two common themes, two common themes. Aid has either decreased, or it has not kept up with mandated expenses and cost drivers, and there has been a disproportionate and significant cost hikes and spikes that every district is facing. The big one for us this year, and for many, many, has been health insurance. Just to give you a perspective on that, we have approximately an $8 million increase between last year and this year in health insurance costs. To give you a frame for that and to amplify that data point, let me give it to you in a context when it comes to foundation aid. So we received $11 million additional in foundation aid last year. $8 million of that is consumed by the single increase in health insurance. That just helps to frame that conversation. We also have two other big significant cost drivers, TRS and ERS. These are our mandated expenses and contributions to our retirement system. TRS has a 10.20 increase, and ERS, the Employee Retirement System, has a 15.2% increase this year. So those are our So those are our big cost drivers. Lastly, we discussed in detail that if we operated this year, the '23-'24 school year, next year, in what is called a rollover budget, simply including the aforementioned mandated increases, as well as our contractual obligations, that would require, and not including anything extra or additional, nothing extra or additional, just running this year, next year, that would require a 6.2 budget increase. That amount would require a supermajority, or what we would call an override. Many feel that that's an exorbitant price, 6.2 it would be. And so therefore, it's not a viable option for Osning. So what are our options? Right. So in order to answer that, we needed to figure out what our maximum allowable tax levy is. It's super important because that's our biggest source of revenue, the local levy, the taxes people pay. We examine what other sources of revenue or income. Some of this requires a certain amount of forecasting into the future. Alita has that crystal ball in her office. No, but it does require a level of forecasting. We're trying to take a look, whether or not, you know, throughout, been at this a long time, there are spikes, there are dips, there are things that ebb and flow, but trying to take a look at that and forecast out. We needed to examine a certain amount of a comfort level we have with using our reserves and with that forecasting. First time, we are being quite aggressive in our recommendations to the Board of Education with that forecasting. We are using two reserves, the ERS reserve and the TRS reserve, in several millions of dollars. We are using our C fund. We are looking at our fund balance. We are looking at all of this. Are we being too conservative this year? Certainly not. Are we being too aggressive? Are we forecasting in an aggressive way? We are, but we think we need it. People have reserve funds for rainy days, and it is pouring rain right now, and we need to do that. And we're hoping the costs for ERS and TRS are variable, and they will level themselves out. Because as we all know, if you, when you're running your house, if you have a huge spike in costs and you have to take that revenue out of the savings account, if you don't somehow fix the reason why you have a cost for that, you're going to have another problem the next time that bill comes around. But we are, Alita and I, as you heard, recommend that we take that level out of that. Next, we needed to figure out the difference. What was the gap or the negative variance? And then discuss how we are going to address this gap, the difference between our revenues and our expenses. And again, it's important for me to repeat what you've been hearing from NISBA, what you've been hearing from us throughout the budget process and what's in the media. Our revenues have not kept pace with our expenses. Lastly, another point or layer that's been part of our conversations this year has been the impact of the funding cliff for our COVID federal stimulus money. We received over $2.179 million that we used for positions. While we were able to move most of those positions, because the federal stimulus money had different dates where the funds expired and drop off, we were able to move, for the most part, a lot of them into the general fund for this year. However, the expenses that I just went through have outpaced our revenue, so we are hitting that funding cliff conversation right now this year. So at our last board meeting, Alita and I presented our recommended maximum allowable tax levy. It is based on those complications, and thank you for allowing us to share that clear-as-mud line-by-line formula, which I hope everyone found informative and helpful, shows that that's where we have landed, at the 3.28%. It carries a real property tax levy of $106 million. Our proposed budget is $181,41,719 million, and that is a budget-to-budget increase of about 7.86% still, 7.86%. So based on this, we have been aggressive with our recommendations, again, on the use of reserves. We are taking $7.5 million from a capital reserve, again, from the C fund, and we've upped our revenue projections from interest and sales tax. With all of that, we still have a budget gap of $2.4 million. So what's our philosophy behind addressing that gap reduction? It's based on a few things. First of all, we believe that we want to keep our class sizes and to prioritize positions that are front-facing with students. We want to ensure that all mandated programs, services are included and adjusted or increased as needed. We need the flexibility to do that. We need to find, this is a good thing to do in good years, too, I mean financially, because every year is a good year here, but just financially. We need to find efficiencies in the things that we do. Are the schedules of students and staff fully maximizing their contractual responsibilities? Are we maximizing time? Have we increased our partnerships that give us expense-driven aid with the RIC, with our consortium? Are there certain things that we do in-house that we could outsource to those and get a expense-driven aid bag? And are there any additional grants or programs that we can enroll in, which will help us as we go through the ebb and flow of this budget a couple of seasons? We're also going to recognize the theory behind the federal stimulus funds, meaning that the use or the intention was never meant to be ongoing. It was meant to address infrastructure, which, congratulations and thank you to Alita and Jared, and Osning has done, and I will underline it, outstanding job, spending significant monies addressing infrastructure. But it was also meant to address learning loss and creating during a period of time research-based approaches to do that. Osning during this period has adopted ARC and a variety of other research-based approaches, so we have been using our money well. And we want to maximize this season the retirement savings and positions of staff. We're looking for ways to not fill all positions and to see if through scheduling and efficiencies, we could absorb these positions. So to that end, Alita, Don, and I have spent incredibly amount of time recently, a lot of time, even in conversations with legal today for over an hour, but we have been able to reduce our budget by $630,000 in non-personnel recurring expenses and $1.6 million in staffing costs across multiple areas and types of positions. We have also made sure, and I want to thank again Alita and Don for working very closely with our systems, our HR systems, to make sure that position controls, budgetary impacts are updated, clear, and exact. I want to thank you both personally for the exorbitant amount of time and even emails on weekends and outreach throughout this time. Later on tonight, when the Board of Education and I, we go into executive session, I have a few employee-specific related data, as well as a few other personnel employment history items that I want to share with the board. Please note that the 3.28 maximum allowable levy is our, Alita and I, recommended levy. And it's important to understand that that is the state recommended levy. There isn't, if our friend Patrick Longo from NISBA would hear, he would recommend that you go up to your allowable levy. Don't leave any money on the table. NISBA, NISCUS, the New York State Educational Conference Board will all recommend that you use your legally allowable tax levy. And that's an important point, because if you believe you need more revenue, because I've been there, and I've been yelled at, if you go to an elected official and you say, I need more money, and the first question they ask is that, have you used all your local resources? Have you used your maximum allowable tax levy? If you haven't, the question I often get was, well then, Mary, you want the rest of the taxpayers in New York State to come up with the difference. They are elected for reasons, they are politicians, they need to go to tables to have strong arguments. So I've been at the other end of that conversation. And I can give you the reasons why sometimes I would say, you need to, like, buy me additional money. I think, Frank, we've been up in Albany doing that, too. But in theory, that is the reason. There isn't, they will tell you that you have to use the money that you have at your resources. Right? So, and they would be hard-pressed, our elected officials, to look for other ways if you haven't taken care of what you can do locally. And that's also part of the reason we're recommending to the board tonight, and which you will vote on next week, the level of reserves we're recommending that we use here this year. So that's our brief budget update, to date, based upon feedback and conversations. I need, turn it back to the board.
And you don't need any final answer from us tonight, because we have to do it next week, or if we land someplace, we land someplace today?
The official vote is next week.
Right.
The official vote on this.
But if there's anything else that we would need from you, now would be the time to speak now for a holding piece.
Right.
Okay.
Just jumping for a second.
Absolutely.
I just want to clarify some things that the superintendent said. The TRS increase is 5%. What she's referring to is the employer contribution, which is 10.25. That's gone up to that amount. So the percentage increase is 5%, but the employer contribution rate, like you said, is 10.25.
And that's the one that comes out of the school district money?
Right. And then the ERS is the one that went up significantly and caused an exemption in the tax cap, which is an exemption of $10,000 for the district. The ERS went up by 16%, and it went from 9.76 to, wait, hold on. It went from, it went up by 16%. It was 13, and it's going up to 15.2, like the superintendent said. And with regard to the health insurance, the health insurance increase for '23-'24 to next year is a $2.8 million increase. And when you look at how much the foundation aid, actually, all of the aid went up, it's about 1.8 million. So it's very clear that a majority of the increase related to state aid is already being used up with the increase from health insurance.
Right. But that just highlights the significant cost drivers and impacts. It is true, Alita's right, that the employee does pay into it, but they are capped at a certain contribution.
Right. All right, now, open it up to board members?
Okay. I'll start off. So first, I want to acknowledge the hard work the administration has done around this. These are not easy decisions, and it looks like you found the 2.2 or so in the non-personnel and staffing costs. So again, not easy decisions. I think with one week to go, for anyone who's listening online in the audience, I think it's important that the public, we hear from the public as well in this last week, because here's why, and you know, I've mentioned this other meetings, and admittedly, I'm still new here, so levies and TR, like, I'm still learning, but the average person in the community wants to know, that's all nice, what is this going to, is this going to be more out of my pocket for next year and the year after that? And if so, what is that? And so the answer to the community is, the answer is yes. If you raise the levy, and your assessment of your home has gone up, you will pay more in taxes. That's clear. That's from the assessor's office, that's clear. So what does that potentially look like? And I know we had some discussions around putting calculators out there, so I'm curious to hear if we're still going to do that. But the calculator shows that if your property went up in value year over year, and the average property in Osning went about 11%, give or take, the range 6% to 14%, but the average was 11. If your property went up, and 97% of the properties, the parcels in Osning went up, so 90%, 7% of you out there, if you own a parcel, your taxes will go up with the increase in the levy. So how much is that? So at 3.28, if you have a $500,000 home that went up at about 11%, let's call it 10%, from 500 to 550 year over year, your taxes are going to go up anywhere between $400 to $450. So I'll just repeat that. If you've gone from 500 to 550, and we adopt the 3.28 maximum levy, and your property value went up about that 10%, 11%, you're going to go up from 100 to 450. That might work for the community, but I think it's important that we put that out there, because the reality is, that's what the community is going to want to know. What does this mean out of pocket? So I've been on record saying, I don't want to see us go more than a 2%. I know we can go up to 3.28, and I know we've cut a lot out, and there's going to be more discussions around that, and that's not easy. But given the fact that, you know, our community wealth ratio isn't terribly high, it's a difference, every dollar counts. So here's a new piece, as we might have seen this week. So GE sold what was known as the GE Crotonville property this week. They sold it. They sold it for, according to the Wall Street Journal, $22 million. The assessed value of that property is about $74, $75 million. So the assessed value, the amount of taxes being collected on that property right now are based in 74 to 75 million, it's sold for 22. So the taxes that the district and the town and the other municipalities are going to get is going to drop literally by millions of dollars. It's going to happen. Now, it may not happen this year, and because these things are lagging, so maybe two years from now, depending where that nets out, we're going to lose millions of dollars off the tax roll. So trying to look ahead, when you take that now, new other piece of information, and I know, Mary, I don't think the state has finalized their budget yet, right? They still delayed on it, April 1, right, was the date, they're still, so we might, maybe we'll net out a little bit more in state aid, hopefully we won't go down. But the reality is, trying to look ahead, we're going to lose the millions of dollars. We're asking the community potentially on an average $500,000 house of 400, 450. And that's why I still reiterate, I'd like to see us to try, and I hope other board members now with this new piece of information about the millions we're going to lose off the tax roll. We lose millions off the tax roll, what does that mean for the GE Croton property? It gets disbursed amongst the other parcels. So out of the 8,500 or so parcels in Osning, we're going to have to absorb that cost. That's $3 million right there. So to me, any increase right now that we do, any increase, and I agree, we're going to need to increase the levy, but any increase with that looming over the horizon, we're going to take a hit on that. I just asked the other board members, and I understand that the hard work the administration has done of this, but just, let's keep that in mind, because that ask right now, 400 to 450 for $500,000 home with $3 million potentially coming off the roll in a couple of years, it's going to be a big ask, it's going to be compounded. So I hope we can consider that, but I understand there's hard work that's gone into this otherwise. So thank you for the work on that.
Anybody?
Just a clarification. On the cuts in the 2.2 million, 600,000 of that was roughly non-staff-related, but 1.6 million of that was staff-related. I guess, you know, one of the things we've always kept the dashboard on, because over the years, we've been in this position and cut positions and cut significantly, if I take a stab at the full-time equivalence of that number, of what we're looking at there, you're talking about 16-ish? Am I off on this? You know, I guess the question I have at the end of the day of all this, doesn't need an answer tonight, but is, is how much, like, we worked really hard to put positions back in. Back in 2011, we cut over 100 positions at the end of the day. We put in positions the past few years with the ability of foundation aid to be able to do that. How much are we going back is really my question at the end of the day. And with enrollment that hasn't really dropped, relatively stable at the end of the day.
It is stable, and actually, it has increased slightly, and we do have an increase in mandated costs. I need to be clear about that. So I will say that to get to the 1.99 that we mentioned before, it's another cut of $1.3 million. And at this point, then, if you had to, and again, because we And at this point, then, if you had to, and again, because when you cut positions, we have senior art, so it's the last in, first out, so financially, they are the lower end of the pay scale.
Okay.
So, if you want, if you look, just use $100,000 just as
That might not be the case, yeah.
Okay, $100,000, which would include benefits or whatever, it's probably a little bit more than that now because of the health insurance piece, but you're looking at roughly 13 additional positions. Now, now, you're looking at cutting electives at the high school level, you're looking at positions that base students, you're looking at changing, you're looking at, oh, you're looking at class size, you're looking at class size issues, you're looking at all of those altogether. So, while I hear, and I don't think there is a person here, Rob, I will agree, that doesn't take money very seriously, but nothing happens without money, right? Nothing happens without money. And there are many things in the school district that, those cost drivers that you can't control. So, in a vacuum, when we're trying to reach a place where you eliminate all the things you can't control, you're still faced with that reality. So, I would say for us to come up with, I'm looking over at Dr. Dover here at the middle school, we're looking at certain schedule changes now, we're looking at electives in the high school. So, if we were given, and clearly, as I mentioned before, we will be looking at that in the fall, because I think that we need to be prepared. You know, you prepare for the worst, hope for the best, that maybe, yes, we'll get more state aid, that maybe, yes, something else will happen, but I think this is a two-year process of things. But I, we will be going into heavy-duty work right now with our staff to really take a look at what those positions would be to go to the 1.99. And again, it is 100% a Board of Education decision. You know, we will obviously give it our best and do everything we can to support our students, our staff, and fulfill the wishes of the Board of Education with fidelity.
Okay. If anyone else would like a turn to speak their piece about the budget as it stands?
Because I think we would need, and just in this consideration, you know, do I, you know, I have a principal's huddle tomorrow morning at 8:30, do I now give another message to the team that we're looking for the additional 1.3 million?
I can say I do not have an appetite to go to 1.99. I feel uncomfortable with the cuts we already have to make at the level, in order to get to 3.28. I worry about next year's budget, when what we levy this year impacts what we were able to levy next year. What, if we don't levy what we need now, we kick our, it's kind of a kick the can problem down the road. I wish, I wish we could have 3.28 and not have to lose a single soul here, and that's already not going to be the case. I'm not comfortable going any deeper than that. Like I said, I'm already uncomfortable at 3.28. I wish we could have our cake and eat it too, I suppose. But we're in a tough situation as it is, and I think, you know, I understand, like, my, you know, I don't want to pay more taxes, right? Nobody here wants, like, I don't want to pay more taxes, and it's going to be a hard thing to do, but I think the qual, to maintain an appropriate quality of education, we need the money. And this is kind of where we're at. I feel a little bit back into a corner on this one. So, that's kind of where the wind is blowing from my seat, if anybody else wants to speak their opinion.
Rob, I want to say that I'm not happy with any of the decisions we have to make, and from like a personal point of view and just knowing our community, I do agree with you, but as Christine said, I'm really concerned about the quality of our education. Education was one of the main reasons we moved here. I really love the opportunities that kids have, and I'm upset that we may have to take away some of that already. I remember when I was doing all the research, running for the board, some of the things that really stood out to me are the electives at the high school level and how just truly incredible they are, and I did not have those opportunities in high school. I'm really happy that our kids get to, especially when I feel our district is maybe not celebrated as much in our Westchester community as it should be, and our kids still get that really great quality education. And, I don't know, 450 makes me sad, the sale of GE to a, I don't know if it was to a not-for-profit, but the, no, it wasn't.
It's to a for-profit.
For-profit, okay, well, that's better. But, well below the assessed value is really, that hurts, and I'm one of the community members who's going to feel it, but I need my kids to have a good education, I need all the other kids here to have a good education, and they deserve that. Just because they don't live in wealth doesn't mean that they don't deserve that.
Kristy Schnicker?
So, I think context is an important thing, like, when we talk about healthcare and we talk about this, you know, the district, over the past five years, has the lowest increases across the county at the end of the day. We had roughly four years of zeros, and if you go back before that, we had times where it was negative to that as well. And I think we were able to do that because of the foundation aid increases and those increases at the time, but our enrollment stayed the same, and, you know, when you look at our spending for people across the county, it's aligned with what others are doing, and I would be concerned about a drop-off there. If you were talking a single year to year and not going to the cap, I might be, if it was a single year, and we had years where we had not left money on the table in that, in those situations, then I might probably be more amenable to it. But in this instance, I think to maintain that, we, we used to have presentations, educational solvency, fiscal solvency, and that, that, back and forth at the end of the day. And so, I lean towards supporting, at this point, I support the 3.28. I think it's, I think it's a balance we're losing in this budget. I'm heartbroken over the losses after, you know, sitting at the table and putting, having to cut things that you didn't want to cut, and we're back in that position again, and some of that will be one-time federal funds, but still, there'll be real cuts here. So, at this point, I support where we're at, unless there's some strange new development that comes out with the budget, which may not happen before the next meeting.
Rusty Banta, got any thoughts?
No.
Okay. First of all, personal plug, just happy birthday to my 11-year-old son. His birthday, too. I, I've been listening, and I do think that, you know, there's a significant piece of this, which is the bond, which is wrapped up together. And we had initially pitched to the community 2.5, 2.6% increase over five years to support this bond, and the whole goal now is try to get that down as low as possible, so that we can have as close to zero as we can get. And I think I am in favor of having our cabinet and our admin spend the time and the effort and the energy in getting that down as close to zero as possible versus trying to shave off of this budget. I think the 1.3 million, which could potentially equate into 20 positions that we would have to cut, is too much for me to stomach, but even one of, one of those, I mean, after we've done some cuts, is too much for me to stomach. I hate cliches, but I don't want us to be penny-wise and pound foolish, and if I have to decide, where am I going to put the effort into balancing this for the community, I'm going to put the money now into front-facing positions in the classroom, in front of our students, and then I'm going to try to get the facilities piece as down as much as I can. That's going to take a lot of time and a lot of effort. I have no regrets about the budgets that this board has, has passed in the last few years, none at all. I do think at the time when we were considering those, we knew that this day was coming, and we had told the community last year, this is, this is the last year that we can keep things flat. So, I feel like we prepared the community for this. If you consider the fact that we had sort of primed the community for this over 2% increase this year, and then we had also primed them for an approximately 2.5% bond increase over the next five years, you're talking about 5%, well, we're at 3.28. I'm good with 3.28. I'm happy and proud that we were able to get to 3.28 when the starting point to keep things where they are was, what, 6.2, 6.02? So, I definitely, I've gotten to a place, and I will, you know, I will say I was fully ready going into this budget season, wanting to make good on that priming of the community for somewhere in the twos, and I understand why that's not feasible now, and these, the thing is with the budgeting, right, these are not one-time costs, and we're already using one-time money to get to the 3.28, so we're already setting ourselves up for a major cliff next year that the board next year is going to have to tackle, and I am trying to minimize that cliff to the extent possible while keeping services that are front-facing for students, while bearing in mind the ask of the bond, and to me, this feels like a very good balance and compromise.
I just have one follow-up question for you, Mary. The 630, you mentioned 630,000 in non-personnel cost. Is that it? Do you feel that there's just nothing left in that line item? That you've mentioned that, look, if we go below 3.28, it's positions. Is there anything beyond the 630 you feel, based on the assessment of your cabinet, that, that's there?
We've had those conversations in terms of layering of time, so do we cut all conferences across the board, right? Do you do that? In a budget-cap scenario, see, this is the thought when you go into these things, you'll never get them back. You just don't get them back because your set point is much lower. And in this day and age, you know, we, we have a number of really important initiatives, we think regular learning is important, so that, that would be an area that people typically would go. I take a look at technology, I have increasing costs there. We're running a full enterprise-based system. We're trying to back up on all kinds of places and areas, and controlling costs in that area, for those of you in the field, that's a difficult thing to do, but we have a ton of service contracts in that area itself. Do I turn to Kim and basically look at, you know, contracted services and all the other stuff? But special education is an area that in one year, it can be flat, another year, it spikes. So, do I keep those items in the budget? Absolutely, because if we get hit with something, you gain it back. You know, the six-point, if I went back to everybody and said, find another 20,000, can you find it in, you know, certain things? We could probably get that, Rob, maybe even up to 100,000, but when we're looking at a million plus in cuts and we need that in ongoing expenses, because, you know, we're looking at health, at health insurance, like, that, that's part of what, like, just think about, we'd be at that 2%, if we didn't get hit with this huge increase in health insurance. So, I, I will say, based upon our preliminary conversations, second conversations, and reading through our budget books again, that, you know, I think people have been very frugal and fiscal with their asks, and I didn't see anything that won't change the course of how we go about doing things next year about kids. The almost 630,000 that we're recommending, where I'm hoping that Jared's trucks don't know like his do, so he's going to have to live with one, and, I mean, there, there are layers of things like that, there's, there are some professional growth, development opportunities in ARC that we're pushing out another few years, we're not going to do. I mean, we went to those big areas for those savings.
No, that, that's appreciated, and just, you know, again, so the community knows, you know, once you raise the levy, the amount, the total amount the district, it's, it doesn't roll back the next year unless you potentially do other, you know, do other things, like you go negative. So, I just want the community to know that. I mean, I just, Catherine, I don't know if you were listening just, just prior to, you know, walking in, but to me, I think it is important to show the community over the next seven days what this means for their pocket. So, if we're going to do that calculator, are, are we going to still do that to put it out there? Because I think it's just important to hear from the community, or at least give the community the information. And again, yeah, it's, the, the board will adopt, we'll, we'll vote on this, and we'll either, you know, vote, and people class their votes, but I do think the community should understand as best they can what it means out of the pocket. So, anything we can do to help facilitate that proactively, my opinion, and hopefully there's some consensus on that, that, that's a good thing.
We are ready with that. It was an ask of the board, so we had a professional company, Elida?
Yeah, we can't do anything until they adopt the budget, because
Right, correct.
We need the exact budget figures.
Right.
And we need to know exactly what the tax levy increase is going to be. So, once, and, and they're still working on it. I don't anticipate, we did take a look at what they provided, but it wasn't accurate. So, we had them go back and double-check the numbers, so I feel confident that after the budget is adopted by the board, that we will be in a better place with that. But what I've seen over the past couple of weeks in scrutinizing the app that's going to go on the website, there was a lot of things that were missing, and were not accurate. So, I don't want to promise something. Today is Tuesday, so we have four or five days left before the adoption on the 23rd, and I don't want to put something out with, number one, if it changes and you guys decide not to do a 3.28, so then that's different, and then people have the wrong information, and then I don't want to rush it, because I don't want to put something out that I know is not accurate. So, I feel more comfortable waiting till after the 23rd, when we know all the figures are in, go back and take one more look at the assessed values for each town, ask them for the updates. But there was certainly a disconnect in what they were providing us and what we needed as part of that calculation.
We're trying to get an outside vendor to do this work, to make sure it's accurate for us to
It's the website developer.
Right, the website developer.
And it's very clear that they, I don't think they're situated in New York State, based on the language that they were using.
But again, it's something we can work on, if it's, continue to work on, I should say, because there's, Nicole has been working on that, too, if it's something to, the board decides would be helpful and useful. So, I will say, you know, based on this and based on information, I have to congratulate the board and this community. Osning has been incredible stewards of public money. You had two years, you really felt the spirit and tone of when you got that additional foundation aid compared to other communities, and, and Rob, your point about GE, we're delighted that it's a for-profit rather than a nonprofit, but every single time a homeowner files for a tax cert request, or a condo, or a con, they, they, what they are, we used to call them tax shifts, they are just tax shifts for everybody else. So, when you file a tax cert, your, your taxes may go down, but the obligation gets spread amongst everyone. So, that is true in, in many aspects of how we go about it here in, in Osning, but the board has maximized so many grants, so many federal opportunities. We have someone who's writing furiously right now, looking for more to do that, but everyone is very, very aware of the fact that public taxes and public money are something we all take very seriously.
I guess I just didn't fully follow that. So, if I'm a, if I'm a community member, over the next seven days, how would I go about finding what a 3.28 versus hypothetically a 2 versus other numbers would be out of pocket? What would be the mechanism to that?
Traditionally, that would have been, like, in another life, in another place, we would recommend people spoke with the tax assessor's office, because we don't control that aspect, and they don't do their eval until August, that's when they set it. So, we would, we would, you could give ballparks, you could give samples, you could give links to the state, the, the form that Elida shared, which is, actually came from the assessor's office here in Osning as well, they pointed us to the same website, but because we don't control that level of assessment, Rob, we want to be very careful about our imperator and what we put out there. We don't want people to say, you were wrong. Right?
No, I, I understand that. I, I thought the assessments, though, were a year-lagging, meaning that when I just walked through that example, it's based on, not 2024, it's based on what you were in 2022 to 2023. I, I just, I guess I'm a little confused, because we put up there a couple of weeks ago, right? Elida, it was great, you had, this is kind of the calculator where of the calculator we're working on. Now we're saying it's not ready for prime time, but the community has basically one week. So I'm not trying to flood your office, Michael, if you're listening as the assessor. But to me, if I'm the community, hopefully, if that's what they're going to need to do, should do that. I mean, I gave you the numbers on the 500, I'm confident those numbers are correct. That's from the assessor's office, the calculation. But if you don't want to take my word for it or any other board members, I think the community should have an ability. And if that, we don't want to do that proactively because we're not ready for it. That's fine. But then, I guess, yeah, then I guess they should call the assessor to find out.
What the exact amount would be, but you can certainly give, like, estimates and just a snapshot, or whatever you want to call it around that, as a sample, like what Alida did in all three scenarios. You could do that.
I think we have still on our agendas from the past, we have information about what the property tax rate per thousand would be, for example, if it was at 6%, if it was at 3.9 something at 1%, if it was at 2%. And you, anyone can go in there and say, all right, here's my house, here's what I anticipate hypothetically in my taxable assessment could be going forward, and then here's my tax rate per thousand. They'd be able to do a relatively simple calculation on their own.
So just to clarify, we have never put a calculator on the website since I've been here. We've always directed people to wait until their bill comes out and if they have questions, to let the, to talk to the assessor's office. What we have done is put out the estimated tax rate. It's always been an appendix in the budget.
To require it.
And it's an estimate. It's part of the appendix. It's been there since I've been here. So we estimate the tax rate. The tax rate is not determined until sometime the end of July, August, after we give them the levy, the amount of levy. So once again, if you look at every budget book since I've been here, the cover letter consistently says that the district does not provide any impact on your, tell you what the tax rate is. And the only thing that we're in control of is the levy, because the assessed values can change, the amount of scars or search areas can change. So we do not have ever put any estimates related to people's individual tax bills. If we can figure out where a person can do that on their own, based on the data that we have today, with that caveat, that's exactly coming from the budget book will be on that page, then they can go for it. But the district has never provided people with information about their own individual tax bills.
It is actually provided, on anyone who's listening, it's tax.ny.gov. It's an extraordinarily simple formula. Tax is owed equals taxable assessment times property tax rate per thousand. That's your starting point. Anyone can go on there and do it. I want to make sure we have all voices heard on the board. Is any, sorry. Anything anyone has left to add, let me know before we move on. We are here. Yes, we're going to our first section of audience recognition. I will first turn it over to anyone who's in person in the audience in front of us. Are there any comments from the public at this time? Okay, there being no show of hands, we'll go to our virtual audience. I'm going to ask our district clerk, the lovely Ily, if anyone has raised a virtual hand. Okay, no raised hands at this time. We will continue on, hang on a sec, guys, to our consent agenda, business of the board. Looking at Section 5, is there anything anyone would like me to break out from 5.1 through 5.4?
I'd like to break out 5.3.
Anything else?
Sorry, that was 5.2, not 5.0.
Okay, 5.2, okay. I will take a motion for 5.1 and 5.3 and 5.4. So moved. 5.1, resolution regarding secret negative declaration, multi-phase project at M. Dorner Middle School. 5.3, resolution regarding the BOSI's proposed 2024-2025 school year budget. 5.4, resolution to appoint consultants for the 2023-2024 school year. Any discussion?
I have a question, 5.1, just a clarification question regarding the secret negative declaration. So it spells out in there what we're planning to do, we're at Phase 1, Phase 2, possibly the building. I guess my question is, if anything changes specifically about this driveway, like, we say 125 spaces, well, we come back and we say, well, actually, we need 150, or 920 linear feet driveway extension, actually, we determine we need 1,000 feet. Does that impact anything? Like, are you allowed to go back and make those changes to the plan? Or, and if not, are we now sort of boxed into this plan, or you just have to go back and file the secret paperwork, again, if anything changes in sort of the driveway plan itself?
So the community actually votes on the budget amount for that work, which is part of the budget, the $4.6 million. So it's not necessarily related to the seeker. The seeker has already been done, and we couldn't even actually put it on a ballot unless we do that seeker. So if there are any changes that are outside of the budget, then we would have to go back and refine the design so that we are still within budget. So the community is actually approving that we can only spend up to the 4.6. So the seeker is just what the scope is right now, but that doesn't mean that it cannot change. Something like the number of parking spots, it would not have any impact on the seeker because it's a negative declaration. If you're going to put a parking space on a roof or something like that, then that would be different. But the number of spots, based on seeker and the current scope, scope's changed from, it is going to change, probably. But the only thing that we would be concerned about is if we're over-expending what was budgeted and the voters approved.
Okay, so if you change the scope, but you're staying budget, you're good. If you change the scope and go over budget, then, or want to do, like, I'm just saying, like, right now, we're still in early phases of this. We might decide, well, it's a driveway. No, actually, we want to make it a road. Like, there's a lot more potentially could change. But I'm just saying, like, from this end, we approve this 5.1 tonight, the district still has the flexibility, whether it's to refile this, whether it's to go back to the community, ask for money, whatever it is, we don't have to do exactly what's here if it's determined at a later date that things need to change for.
The seeker, the seeker doesn't have anything to do with the budget amount.
Okay.
You just have to tell the voters what the scope is, and you have to evaluate the impact on the area before you can even put it in front of the voters. So actually, the last day is next week for that to be approved, or else it cannot be part of the budget. So, but they're not tied together. That document doesn't mean that we are limited to spend 4.6. What is approved by the budget, by the voters, is what limits us.
Okay, thank you.
And I think it's a natural question in many of these things. You end up with additional costs, or you end up with, we call, value engineering. Once you start the design development in a, and the state understands that. So this gives a general overview of what you're trying to do, what you're touching and the land that you're going about. Whether or not we're able to do it is a whole other conversation once we get to the next stage, voter approval, and then development of the design based on this.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's an important point. The final design comes after voter approval at the end of the day, always, on all projects we've done, it always happens. And you refine the budget based on what the issues encountered are.
And there's no real way to do that any less comfortably.
It's the way the system works.
Yep.
And that's how it is.
And as we discussed at our facilities committee meeting, the beauty of this is that it serves as a communications notice as well. We had to notify many in the town governance and village governance levels about this level of work. The list of people that were notified, information was given, was significant. So again, it serves as a real notification process to everyone to, hey, we're planning on doing this, and let you know.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. I'll take a motion for 5.2. So moved. Second. 5.2, resolution regarding the election of Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's board members. Any discussion?
Yes, I'm not, I have concerns about one of the candidate's DEI positions, Neil Haber, and I'm not, at this time, comfortable supporting having him on the BOSI's board.
Okay, any further discussions? Is there a motion to amend the resolution?
Yes, I would move to amend it to not include him.
Any further discussion? Or any discussion on the proposed amendment? I think that's how that works. Any discussion?
I think you have to vote on a slate of candidates. I think the question is, can you break it out individually, or you'll all be on a full slate? And I would not be in favor of dropping anyone off of the slate. If people wanted, if it's possible in this to break it out and to have individuals, I'd be amenable to that. But I think there should be a vote on each one of the candidates, either in a total together or.
Or individually.
But that's a procedural question. Maybe we would ask the clerk if the slate can be broken up. Sometimes it can, sometimes it can't.
I mean, it was, I'm just going to pontificate a little bit. This is obviously not, I'm not the clerk. But it seems that if we have four vacancies and we want to cast only three votes, that's no different, really, than bullet voting in an election. We should be able to. But Ily, do you have guidance for us on this? No, I'm not expecting you to. No pressure. Okay.
In reading the resolution, it basically says, by official ballot, requesting the Austin Board of Education to cast one vote for each of the four vacancies to be filled. So I would recommend that we have four motions at the end of the day for each of the candidates.
Okay. So then I think we would need to vote on Annie's amendment, and then take another motion for an amendment to reflect four individual votes, unless somebody disagrees.
I don't know the parliamentary procedure on that.
I don't think it can hurt. I don't think it can hurt to vote on the amendment.
But I would like to hear from Annie, if we're going to do that, if Annie can speak further, or any other people have the same, you know, objective account, like to hear more about it, or we.
I think, I'm going, I think we should vote on individuals if there's a concern.
Okay.
And we should just play out. I mean, I know all four board members, and I don't have to share the same concerns at the end of the day, but I respect my colleagues' opinion on it.
Okay. So I'll take a vote on the amendment proposed by trustee Gomez, unless there's any further discussion about that specific amendment. All in favor?
We took a motion in a second on that amendment. I don't know that we did, did we?
Yeah, I think Christine and I.
Yes.
Okay, you did. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're voting all in favor on the proposed amendment. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. You got that, Ily? I'm just making sure she's, it's unusual. It has to go in the minutes. Abstention. Okay, is there another motion?
I'll make a motion that we break this resolution into four individual resolutions, numbered, one, what do we get, 5.1?
5.2.
So.
5.2.1.
5.2.1, 5.22, 23, 24, for each candidate.
Okay, so just to clarify these proposed amendments, we will have 5.2.1 for Kathryn Lilburn, L-I-L-B-U-R-N-E. Ily, you let me know when you're good? And then we would have 5.2.2 for Michael Simkins.
If I might just interject.
Yes.
The way we number our resolutions, you can't really, it comes out as 5.21. You may want to just make a motion to withdraw 5.2, and then just make a 5.5 to 5.1.
Hang on one second. Okay. But then that wouldn't be an amendment, no?
You're making four new resolutions, right? You just, your numbering scheme isn't going to work in the way the board does its, does its resolution.
But wait, hear me out on this, because to, like, it's one thing to amend it, right, which is still within the same resolution, which is all under the umbrella of 5.2.
Correct.
It's another to do fully new resolutions, which I don't think we have on the agenda.
Right, but you would do a 5.5 instead of a 5.21, because you'd be skipping from 5.4 all the way down to 5.21.
I'm not, 5.21? No, I'm doing 5.2.1, is how I'm proposing it.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
We're good? We're there now?
Yep.
All right, so I think I had 5.2.2 as Michael Simkins. You got that? Okay. 5.2.3, Neil Haber. 5.2.4, James Ryan. And so this is an amendment to break this out into four subgroups. Any discussion on breaking this out into four subgroups before we then vote on each individual subgroup? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. This is my Olympics, guys. I can do this. Okay. All right. We have now amended 5.2, so that it is in four parts. I will take a motion for 5.2.1 involving candidate Kathryn Lilburn. So moved. Second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. I will take a motion for 5.2.2, Michael Simkins. So moved. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. I will take a motion for 5.2.3, Neil Haber. So moved. Second. Any discussion?
I do not agree with, I have concerns about DEI policies. And we have a very diverse district, so I just want to make sure every student is accurately represented and fought for.
I will add that I was disappointed in some of trustee Haber's positions that were stated publicly during the New York State School Board Association. I'm not, I don't.
Legislative committee meeting?
The legislative goals where the districts come and they present what they propose should be advocated for by the New York State School Board Association in Albany. Sorry, I don't remember the name off the top of my head.
Can those that have the concerns elaborate on that for the other board members? Because it's hard to then, we're taking the time to break this out. I'd like, I think it's fair to hear what the concerns are, so we can make an informed decision on that.
I'll go first. I recognize this is probably very uncomfortable for everyone. So I don't, I'm, personally, I was upset, upset is not the right word, but I wasn't pleased with his colloquy on advocating for stricter gun control in the state on behalf of the schools and the School Board Association. I felt like it was at odds with the crisis that we have in our country involving assault weapons and incidents happening, specifically schools being targeted.
For myself, the district that he is in had a policy committee meeting on DEI, potentially using Austining as a jumping-off point. And I don't know how specific to get, but I was uncomfortable with some of what was said in that meeting. It is public. He said that he wasn't sure that we should be advocating anti-racism in our schools, and I very much disagree with that. I don't know how you can have children of color in your schools and not advocate not hating them, which is how I took it personally.
I mean, I think, like all good boards, at times you have various perspectives in debate, and some of those conversations that go on, in terms of especially the legislative committee, there's a balance to all that, and so I don't, from my perspective, I think you make better decisions when you have lots of viewpoints involved there at the end of the day. To the, to the point of the context, I'm not familiar with all the details of what went down in Croton at the end of the day, I will say, I'm concerned at how that necessarily, I know things were said in the meeting, but from my experience with the individual, I'm not sure that accurately, you know, reflects the experience I have, but, you know, I think Neil's been a long public servant at the end of the day, you know, has been supportive of public education, and I don't dismiss the need that all school districts basically need to support all students and, you know, and I, every student, I mean, state law and federal law, you know, you know, provides that we all are supposed to represent all students, no matter what color they are at the end of the day, so I understand the concerns, I don't know that that's quite the experience that I have, and so, my other experience, notwithstanding, leads me towards support.
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion?
Yeah, just based on that, I mean, I, I mean, Bosse, maybe this is a question, when Bosse's puts up their slate, I assume they've, fair to say, they vet it, Bosse's puts up the slate, or these people want to be on it, and?
It's like, it's like your school board in Austin, you step into the ring and put your thing out, there's four open seats, there's four people that step, that basically got the petition signed.
Got, got it, and it's, you said there's four open seats.
Correct.
So, us, voted one by one, the member districts of Bosse's determine who gets on the board, or how are these, like, if we vote one way or another, is it binding? Like, if enough of the districts say no to someone, or yes to someone, they make it or don't make it? Is that sort of what we're doing, or just?
Yeah, if they don't get, if they don't get a majority, I don't know if it's one or a majority, I think it may just be one district's vote that gets you on at the end of the day, it's by both old count at the end of the day, but boards end up, you know, voting kind of collectively, we all get one vote, even though we're breaking out to four, we're all going to vote, there'll be one vote from Austin at the end of the day.
And the candidates, okay, so it's one vote from Austin?
My understanding.
Okay, okay, all right.
And, so there are four vacancies and four candidates?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it's two ayes, all in favor of, of voting for trustee Neil Haber to fill the vacancy, I should say. Does that make sense?
That was just.
Okay. So we have an aye? Any other ayes?
Yeah.
Two ayes?
Yes.
Okay, Illy, you have two ayes. Opposed? Opposed? Opposed.
Trustee Banta, did you vote on that one?
Or do we have an abstention?
Abstain.
Okay, so we have three, two, the motion does not carry.
It's actually not a quorum, it's not a quorum of the board.
No, it's not a quorum, right?
It's not a quorum of the board, you have four votes.
So what happens now? I've never had this happen, guys, I don't know.
I think we have not cast a vote, so you can only cast a vote for three, now what that does with the rest of Bosse's, I don't know.
Illy, how do you write that down in the minutes? Okay, we'll come back to that. Okay. All right, I'm going to put an asterisk there, because I want to find the answer to that question myself. I will. Guys, just give me one second. In most instances, a majority vote is a simple majority of the members voting, excluding those who choose to abstain. So we had a quorum of board members voting in this, correct? We had one abstention, one absence, so that's five.
Yes, six total.
And we had a simple majority who voted no. I believe that that means the, the motion does not carry.
Sorry, what are you referring to?
Robert's Rules of Order.
Yeah, I, I, I guess it's going to be a question, right? My understanding is any, any resolution of the board has to be a quorum of the board, if you don't have four votes, it doesn't pass, but maybe we should ask the attorneys and
Yes, I think we should.
We have the record of the votes, and the attorney can decide whether we voted or not.
Okay, so we're going to put a blank in the minutes for that one until we get the answer, but I will make a note to follow up with the attorneys and see everybody. I will take a motion for five point two point four. So moved. Second, five point two point four, we have James Ryan. Any discussion?
I just would like to thank Dr. Ryan, who was former principal at Austin High School, for continuing his lifelong service in public education.
And Dr. Ryan has been the president of the Bosse's Board, or superintendent for the Bosse?
He was former superintendent.
Former superintendent, that's right. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. All right, guys, we got through that. Thank you. I'll take a motion for six point one. So moved. Second. And it is six point one, resolution regarding interfund transfers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. All right, guys, we got through that. Thank you. I'll take a motion for six point one. So moved. Second. And it is six point one, resolution regarding interfund transfers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. All right, guys, we got through that. Thank you. I'll take a motion for six point one. So moved. Second. And it is six point one, resolution regarding interfund transfers. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Okay, I'm looking at section seven now, anything from seven point one through seven point thirteen that I should break out? All right, I'll take a motion for seven point one through seven point thirteen. So moved. Can I get a second? Second.
Second.
Okay. Seven point one, resolution regarding administrative staff resignation. Seven point two, resolution regarding civil service staff resignation. Seven point three, resolution regarding support staff resignation. Seven point four, resolution regarding administrative staff appointment. Seven point five, resolution regarding professional staff appointment. Seven point six, resolution regarding civil service staff appointments. Seven point seven, resolution regarding support staff appointment. Seven point eight, resolution regarding professional staff appointments before and after school programs. Seven point nine, resolution regarding per diem substitute appointments. Seven point ten, resolution regarding APPR accountability. Seven point eleven, resolution regarding approval of school volunteers. Seven point twelve, resolution regarding support staff request for leave of absence. Seven point thirteen, resolution regarding confidential staff appointments. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Okay, let's go into board policies. Let me start with eight point one through eight point three. Of those three second readings, is there anything anyone would like to break out? I'll take a motion for eight point one through eight point three. So moved.
Second.
Eight point one, resolution to adopt policy eleven twenty, school district records as a second reading. Eight point two, resolution to adopt policy regulation eleven twenty R, school district records regulation is a second reading. Eight point three, resolution to adopt policy five four zero five, local wellness policy is a second reading. Any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, sorry, just on, on eight three, I believe that policy talks about school lunchtimes and should be no less than twenty minutes, but if the board, if this goes, you know, if this stays as policy, but I know we've talked about a board maybe talking about school lunchtimes, and looking at scheduling around that for next year, if we decide and the administration recommends, like, I don't know, forty-five minute lunch period, I don't think the way the policy written would restrict that, it's only if you went under fifty, twenty, right? If he said, nope, you get five minutes, right, so you could do more, right, okay, that's it, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Okay, so, let's, I'll take a motion for, I'm going to, I'm going to break these out. Take a motion for eight point four, resolution to adopt policy one two three zero, public participation at board meetings as a first reading. So moved.
Second.
Okay, eight point four, resolution to adopt policy twelve thirty, public participation at board meetings as a first reading. Any discussion? I'll get us started on this, I think if you have it, and you can pull it up on your computers, it should also be looked at in conjunction with eight point seven on here, which is policy two three five zero. So I was able to join the policy committee this past week, and our attorney was there to take us through this, and it, you know, she basically said to us, you guys as a board can do whatever you want, make it consistent, right? And so, you know, I think we had expressed that there was some consternation or concern around the thirty-minute time limit, so she said, you could absolutely take that out. And then we confirmed with her that if we're in a situation where we have a public comment section, for example, at the beginning, at the middle, at the end, wherever we want to put it, and it's getting late, and we feel as though, for example, the weather is bad, or our staff is not going to be able to get home, and they have long distance travel, and we want everyone to be safe, any trustee can make a motion at any point in time to close public comment, and they can do that now, right? So this isn't new, and best practice is to give the reason why you would be closing public comment. And so I can say, for example, if the board trustee says I want to close public comment because I don't like the comments that are being made publicly, we then have a discussion, and I say, I'm not, I'm not voting in favor of closing public comment, we have our colloquy, we take our vote, right? But that right exists now for the board. So she said there was no harm in codifying that and putting that extra sentence in here. There is a typo in this, and I did ask her specifically about typos, and she said you can delete any language you want by orally amending it at the board table. So in the red section, where it says individual comment shall be limited to no more than three minutes in length, blah, 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 each member of the public who wishes to make a public comment shall only have one opportunity per meeting to speak, this phrase, unless there is a balance of time left in the public comment period, should be deleted, but it was relevant to the thirty minutes that, that was removed from this. So I would recommend making an amendment to delete that language, starting with unless, ending with period. Transitioning now, right, because this doesn't say there is one public comment period, there's two public comment periods, there's three public comment periods. So if you transition now to looking at policy two three five zero, the board is faced with three options with two three five zero. Our attorney doesn't love that we have this policy, and actually recommended that we eliminate it altogether, she feels like it is too prescriptive, and it doesn't give us the flexibility that we might want as a board. I suspected that that's probably not the direction that the board wants to go, I think we probably have it there for a reason, historically it's been there. It does have language in two three five zero that says, this is just meant to be a guideline, this can be changed at any point in time upon consensus of the board. So, she said, we either leave that as is, and then based on consensus, it does not even have to be a motion, if we want to do something different than public with how we order our public comment portions of the meeting, we can do that at any time, best practice is to be consistent. Alternatively, we can do a revised two three five zero, which switches number six and number seven, and that would put the first public comment section typically found on our agendas up to after the superintendent's update and before staff and cabinet presentations. So I guess we, as a board, need to decide, number one, are we okay with the revised one two three zero public participation at board meetings as amended, and I'll make a motion for the amended. But then, number two, what do we want to do with two three five zero? We want to scrap it entirely? We would need a motion for that. We want to keep it as is, and just agree that as of right now, the consensus of this board is to do something different, if that is the consensus? Or three, do we want to revise it to reflect the consensus? And that is what we need to discuss. Please let me know if you have questions.
So, I have a question on the policies, and then I guess what was reviewed, but, so in twenty three fifty, the first public comment period as written here is for agenda items only, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm just, I had heard something different in earlier conversations of the board, it doesn't sound like a very material change to me at the end of the day, so if we're keeping it as public agenda items only, I think that's a balance of what the board's been doing, but I'm not sure that that's the consensus of the group here, but, so I think there's a question there. The other question I had related to the other two sections, policy twenty one eleven refers to the meeting rules, the meeting guidelines that are basically published that are on every board agenda meeting, and there's guidelines, and then twenty one eleven. And were those looked at in conjunction with these policies? Because I wonder if there's not a conflict, actually, I'm pretty sure there is a conflict in there. So I guess the question is, when we did the review, was that seen, and was that looked at, and, because I think you probably also then need to look at the guidelines and make decisions there about it. I would say, generally speaking, I think some of those things in there came from experience of, of difficult board meetings, and there was, the guidelines in particular were written and related to with NISBA, and recommendations at the time during contentious periods, so I think those should at least be looked at and considered in the policy, there's overlap between what's here and what's already in there.
Hang on, let me get to it.
So, on every board meeting, if you go to the, the top of the agenda, there is a section that has basically, I think it's in the call to order, is a call to order, the meeting guidelines are listed, public comment guidelines, four one, tonight's meeting has the public guidelines document, and then policy twenty one eleven has an exhibit that talks about referencing those guidelines forward.
Can you say that again? I can't find what you're speaking about.
So, if you go to section four one on the agenda, there's a, there's an entry for public comment guidelines, and if you look under the public content, it has for further guidelines, please refer to public comment guidelines, and you click on the link, and this is the document that was drafted by a subcommittee of Ms. Crossley, Mr. Galiff, and myself, along with looking at NISBA, and, you know, this was around the time of COVID, contentious budget cycles, there was a NISBA version, there was, we put this together with an Austin, you know, changes made for that, but I look at things like this to say, like, they're guidelines from boards in the past to either consider and weigh, and they keep, they keep you in a decent spot when you have contentious situations, so I guess I would be leaning towards keeping something similar to this. It's also a way we tell the community that, hey, here's the guidelines for the meeting, they used to be published in the back of the room, now they're basically online in the agenda, and so anybody says, questions something you do, they have that public period guidelines there. The other path of that in the policy manual twenty one, if you look at exhibit twenty one eleven in the policy book, exhibit E two, it talks about under the board member standards for conduct, there's a section that talks about public participation at board meetings, and has four items in it. And one of those items talks about that the rules will be distributed at each meeting, and that's what.
They are, right? Because they're distributed online?
Yeah.
Right. Okay, so I have an answer to this, which is, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen are consistent with the two policies we're discussing tonight. The, what is posted on our agendas is a guideline, it's not policy, it's not in our policy manual. Guideline can be changed. Guideline can be changed anytime we want to change a guideline, right? So if we are changing our policy and it's no longer consistent with our guideline, but we're all in agreement that we're going to change our policy, it's a simple fix of moving a couple of sentences around to make sure our public speaking guidelines match the policy.
Yeah, I mean, I think what you have right now, it doesn't, if you're, are you allotting people, there's a three-minute cap. It's a three-minute cap across the board. Does that stay? If it does, your guidelines probably are fine. If you're changing the three-minute cap and you're not doing a certain seg, section at the beginning of the meeting, then you're probably okay. But if I thought one of the policies, basically, I guess if you strike the balance of time and you get past your limits on that. So I think, you know, these are the four places where you just don't want to have something in conflict with one another. That's why I asked, you know, was it reviewed?
So we're...
At some point, yes. Not the last meeting, but it had come up in prior meetings, this, this document and how it relates.
In twenty-one eleven.
So our attorney was very clear that we need to decide what is the policy change that we are going to go with, right? And then we need to work from there to make sure that our guidelines match whatever policy it is that we're agreeing on, right? So we, that's step one. There is nothing I can see unless I'm missing it that is inconsistent with two, one, 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 and just twenty-three fifty in any proposed form, including getting rid of it, and the one, two, three, zero.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I think that probably depends on the discussion of what's to come. Because like, if, if we're sticking to agenda items only in the first public comment period, everything here matches that. If there was, you know, I heard a different, I thought I heard something different in previous meetings.
I agree. I thought I, I heard that too.
So if that's going to change, you've got policy changes, you've got guideline changes, you have...
But let me, let me ask you though, how, how is, how is non-agenda items at the, at any time we want it inconsistent with any of this? Because I'm reading public participation at board meetings as the board will continue to follow rules distributed, right? Which if we want to change, will change. And the board will provide opportunities for the public to raise issues at the beginning or end of the meeting. And then members of the public may allow to comment on agenda items, following board discussion, comments made to the president, blah, blah, blah. It doesn't say when that needs to happen. I'm just, I'm not reading it as inconsistent with what, what we are proposing to do.
So twenty-three fifty, item number six, which I take as the first comment period, says, members of the audience will be invited to comment upon or raise questions regarding agenda items.
Yeah, I, I agree with you there. I think I was talking about, I want to take it a step at a time.
Okay.
I, I don't see anything consistent with one, two, three, zero, when you compare it with two, one, one, one.
I don't know that they compare, right? They're, but they're, but basically twenty-one eleven has, refers to the meeting rules, right? The meeting guidelines, right?
Right.
And some of what's in the meeting guideline is also in twenty, twelve, thirty. So I was just...
Wait, twenty?
Twelve, twelve, one, two, three, zero. That policy has similarities to the guidelines. I just, I think if there's anything in conflict there, that's why I was just asking, was it reviewed? Because you don't want to have conflict there, right?
Right. So twenty-three, five, zero, I agree with you. I don't think it, switching six and seven as the revision is proposed necessarily gets to the spirit of what we were trying to do, right? I think, but if you changed, for example, if you made an amendment regarding agenda items and you change that to regarding school-related items, I think you satisfy what, what the spirit of this was. That being said, our attorney was very clear that two, three, five, zero is a guideline that is able to be contained, changed with the consensus of the board at any time. And that is a provision in two, three, five, zero. So she didn't see any reason to amend it as it exists at all right now, because any of this can be changed with consensus of the board. She was literally like, the board just needs to decide what they want to do and based on consensus of the board, do that.
In every meeting, then you'd take a, you'd basically vote to decide whether the open comment periods for agenda items or for non-agenda items?
I mean, you could unless there was a consensus of like, we're comfortable doing this, this budget season unless somebody makes a motion to do something differently or wants to raise it in board dialogue. She really was said, like, this could be as open-ended and flexible as you want it, just be consistent with this is the consensus of the board.
Or, and this is why I agree with the attorney, get rid of it.
Yeah, or she said, get rid of it. And then you don't run into this problem.
Yeah, right. And, and then looking at other districts, again, I did little homework. I didn't see this thing anywhere. Like, they have one, twelve, thirty, and that's kind of it. Like, they have a public comment period and that's it. So to me, yeah, I encourage the board to think about this twenty-three fifty thing. And admittedly, I, I don't know, Frank, if you work on it, it looks like it was last two thousand and eight.
Yeah, no, this is something that's been on the books for a long time, so I wasn't here with this yet.
I mean, to me, that's what's kind of mucking things up a little bit.
Yeah, I mean...
So to me, I would, I, my vote would be, just get rid of it. Decide as consensus what the board wants to do in the whole spirit, three minutes, move things up, down, and then now you don't have to think about it every meeting because you have a twenty-three fifty.
The sentiment really was more like that sort of, here's the ideal of how a meeting will look is appropriate for a board handbook. You know, it's sort of designed to give a board who's maybe a newer board, just sort of an outline of the expectation of the meeting. I, I would be in favor of scrapping it and putting it in to the board handbook because I think it's, it's, I think there's spirit here to make change and it's complicating. It's complicating us being comfortable with the consensus. If that was scrapped, then I don't see any conflict between one, two, three, zero and two, one, one, one.
We're jumping around a little bit, sorry, so...
That's okay.
Yeah, I, I think what's in twelve, thirty just has to be vetted against existing meeting guidelines and if there's changes that need to be made.
I think we're going to have to probably tweak the meeting guidelines. It can be done, it can be done over a Word document that is then brought forth to the next meeting. It doesn't have to go through a formal process. It's a guideline, not a policy. So, you know, we can talk it out. People can, if they want to change a policy tonight, they want to propose what they would tweak on that tonight, feel free. You can do it, you can send it an email. I mean, I think it should be pretty easy to tweak it so that it's reflective of one, two, three, zero and not as prescriptive. Because the base, the guidelines really are meant to guide the public in what will be acceptable and what will not be acceptable in terms of how they present and conduct themselves before the board. And designed to sort of, if we have a situation where, you know, tensions are running high, a mechanism to try, that we all know is the playbook of how we handle those kinds of situations.
So the recommendation at this point, sorry, is a question. So there's no time limit on the first common comment period at the end of the day?
Correct.
Okay. And so I guess we'll see if that becomes an issue with the board conducting its meetings, right? At the end of the day and budget cuts and things like that, you tend to find those issues out. So I think that sounds like, you see nods of head, people are leaning towards going that route versus something that gives the board, the cuts, you know, can, you know, protects the board's time at the end of the day. I'm not so sure I'm on the same page with that. I think, you know, but I understand the, the change. I just want to understand what the headset is. So no time cap, three-minute rule for everybody at the end of the day and they don't get the balance of time because that was what you're proposing to strike out.
Correct.
Certainly gives equitable access and that was what I think.
Just Frank, to your concern around that, I think Catherine, you said, if you don't put the thirty in there, board can still shut it down by a vote, right?
Yeah, I mean...
Or in theory, it may not be pretty, but in theory, like, hey, we're, we're here two hours, you know, we're not, we're...
I think a good example of this is how the advocacy night goes at, at NISBA, which is what we were talking about earlier. You know, you have all of these resolutions coming up and as the night wears on, people present a resolution and then the next thing that you hear, once it's eleven o'clock at night, is I move to end dialogue on this. And then the motion passes and they move on to the next resolution. I don't, that's not the spirit of the board that I see here in front of us, so I doubt that that would happen. But I, I could see it, you know, our attorney also said, if you need to have a quick board meeting, like, there is no requirement that you have public comment at all, right? It's totally flexible. This policy is making us, allowing us, is requiring us to have public comment, which I don't think anyone's uncomfortable with that. But if we have a storm on the horizon and we have to urgently pass something and we need to be able to get our staff and ourselves out of the building safely, then we can come in, we can do that and, and any trustee can make a motion to end all the comment. I, I can't think of an instance where that has happened, but it does allow us the ability to do that.
The board's just gonna, you know, I, I think it puts the board in a little bit of a precarious position at the end of the day. And, you know, I think that that's, you know, how you implement it and how you stick through in the difficult times will be kind of how that, that plays out, right? Because you got to make sure people have the same access and just because you don't like an issue, you can't shut it down. And we've had people come with lengthy issues at the end of the day. So just...
Well, let me just be clear, the guideline would still have the three minutes in it.
When you, when you have many people lined up for an issue at the end of the day and as you get into, maybe not this year, but maybe next year after people have seen cuts for a year, you know, we've sat in the room for a long time and it'll, it'll just, it'll require a lot, but...
Well, the reason why the, there's no time limit actually in the policy is because having it in the guideline allows us, any trustee to say, I move to limit public comment. We have a huge crowd here tonight, two, one and a half minutes or two minutes per person. So that was sort of the idea behind that. And if you have three minutes per speaker in here, that's policy. You're stuck with the three minutes.
This is not school board, but I have seen, and I'm not saying I agree with this, but I have seen a town board say, if you are all here to speak for the same thing, please speak as like one group with one comment. Are we allowed to do that?
Yes, that's what our attorney said. We are also allowed to do that because we don't have anything in our policy that specifically prevents us from doing that. So she did say, one of the reasons why you might be in a position to say, I move to limit public comment on this issue of maroon table class at the board table. We've heard ten comments on maroon table class at the board table. We have to get on with our business at the board this evening. If you are here to comment about maroon table class at the board table, please send us an email. So she said that this also allows us the flexibility to do that.
The other thing I'm just not fully sold is the three minutes. Like, I like what the guidelines say, which says, you could adjust it with a majority of the board. If we put in a, I understand the consistency, but my, my recollection with counsel was, you could have something that says three minutes or this language in the guideline and still be consistent. To me, it's awkward when you have one person online or here, we're buzzing them out at two fifty-nine. To me, in the spirit of this, I'd love to have the ability to have that flexibility to go longer within reason. And I believe counsel said, that's not going to create a situation where someone then next week comes and says, well, you gave that person four, you'd be insulated against that because literally there was no one else in here on airline. So that was just my other addition on that. And the other quick...
And it is in there. It's under the guideline. It says that three-minute limit can be adjusted at the discretion of the president or the majority of the board.
But you're, the, the new twelve, thirty says a hard three, though.
No. Does it?
What it says, individual comments should be limited to no more than three minutes.
And no more than three minutes.
Yeah. So what wins? The guidelines or the public?
The policy wins.
Right. So my, my point, I would love, my, in the spirit of doing this, if we're going to do it and do it in one fell swoop, the language around that the, can be, something that you could adjust, that if one person is here and his place is empty, we're not buzzing them out at three. You can go to three fifteen, you can go three thirty-four and then illegally you're covered. If someone comes next week and says, I saw that meeting, wait a minute, you gave them four, you got to give me four. And I think counsel said, yeah, you could do that if you write that in. So that was the one part of that. And the other part is, if we get rid of twenty-three fifty, the first comment period can be on non-agenda items, because again, from my end, my vote would be, move that one up that covers everything, get your three plus maybe a little bit more. And if you want to stay for the meeting, great. And if you want to ease out, that's fine too. That would be loving my spirit of this.
Right. We can decide based on a consensus what we want to do with that. We don't have to codify it.
Don't have to codify it so you can, so, but would that have to be done at every meeting then, if there's no twenty-three fifty?
Nope.
Oh, you could just do it.
We could just do it until the consensus to not do it is there.
Okay. But you don't have to take a formal vote on it?
No, as long as we don't have twenty-three fifty.
Right.
We're good. Honestly, even if we have twenty-three fifty, she said that we're good.
You could, but you don't always...
You can always change it.
You could, okay. But when you say change it, you could just, do we have to say, okay, this meeting...
She said you don't have to do a formal vote.
Don't have to do a formal vote.
She said consensus is fine.
Okay. So they all, so that's good. So that covers from my end, that piece, but the three minutes, it said, if you do put in the policy at three, I think we're limited. I don't think the guidelines will supersede that. So I would, I would advocate...
I don't think so. I mean, I, I think there's case law on this that basically says, like, if you're approximately three minutes and you're saying to the speaker, I know you have more to say, but you've hit your three-minute mark and you have business with the board to get on to, like, please finish up. That is consistent with the spirit of the policy.
You'd be able to go a little bit longer. We're not buzzing people.
I don't know, are you, are you speaking from your, for yourself or...
No, no, no. Like, well, well, you know, Kim Jeffries comment, we, we're buzzing her out. And like, to me, the spirit of this should be like, okay, how much more you got? You got another thirty? Okay, you're good, another thirty. I don't, I, it just feels awkward, especially with an empty room that you're literally, we're, we're buzzing someone out. So to me, if we're going to do it, I'd love to see the flexibility, like, it's in the guidelines that you could say, okay, you can go a little bit more. Not ten minutes, not seven, four, three forty-five, and that literally click them off. It just feels awkward to me.
I mean, it does feel awkward. I think like, we've even received guidance in the past that although it was back in the day as treated as a very strict, you're done cutoff, like, the thought process, I think from NISBA has changed around that and they're trying to get boards to take a little more approachable approach. I don't, I like the three minutes being in the policy because I think it sets the tone and the expectation. And I think the guidelines allow us enough leeway as long as we're in the spirit of three minutes. That's my take on it.
As long as there's flexibility in theory, that, that, that works for me.
Okay. Do we have further discussions on this? I am going to take a motion to amend policy one, two, three, zero, under eight point four, to strike the language in the second paragraph. Eight, eight lines down, beginning with the word unless and ending with the word period and then a period after it. And I will change the comma after speak to a period. Any discussion on that proposed amendment?
Sorry, did you just say, say that again? What was the change?
Yes. The change is line eight of the second paragraph, beginning with the word unless, the language, unless there is a balance of time left in the public comment period, period, will be stricken. And then the comma after the word speak in the line above it will be changed to a period.
Thank you.
Sure. Any discussion on that proposed amendment? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Okay, I will now take a motion for eight point four as amended. Second. Eight point four, resolution to adopt policy one, two, three, zero, public participation at board meetings as a first reading as amended. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Okay. I think it probably makes sense to take a motion now for eight point seven, resolution to adopt policy two, three, five, zero, board meeting procedures as a first reading, so we can decide what it is that the consensus is to do with this. Can I get a motion for that? Second?
Second.
Okay, so then I'm gonna call for discussion on this. Are we in favor of scrapping this and putting it in the handbook? That's where I'm leaning.
I am.
I'd be over to it as well. If legal is good with that, then yes.
Legal would be very happy with that.
She literally said, "Why do you have this?"
I don't like this.
Yeah.
I like it being in the handbook.
The one caution I'll give on this is, the policy manual is a board's handbook at the end of the day. And when you start to put things into documents and they fall out, you have to look at the value and assume that it's not there, right? Somebody edits it out at the end of the day. So I guess the question in my mind is, is there any, is there a value here with this I would say probably. If it's worth putting in the handbook, then I would leave it in the policy manual.
I don't know. I don't, I mean, I, it seems to me like this was put in there as, as a guideline to help somebody figure out how to set an agenda. I don't have a problem with it being in the handbook. Do we have any other discussion?
Is the concern that someone will like go rogue and make a bizarre agenda if it's not a policy?
Um, I mean, I don't know. I'm in favor of getting rid of it, so I don't have the concern.
I know you don't, I'm just asking in general, what the concern, or Frank, what's the concern? If anybody knows what...
I think when you, when you, when you look at things, especially as a new board, you wanna have, you wanna leverage experience of previous boards at the end of the day. This is clearly here for a reason. We can, you know, I don't know if we're gonna get into the reasons why it's here, but it's there to provide guidelines for what you expect the board to do with the community at the end of the day. And so, do I see value in it? Yeah, and previous boards saw a reason to put it in there, and while I understand, yes, it can be changed at any time, I think it's good for a board to have, you know, there. So, you know, we'll put it up for a vote, I'll vote to support it, but, you know, that doesn't mean that I pretty well.
But let me ask you this. Is there an appetite to amend it so that line six reads, instead of regarding agenda items, regarding educational and school-related items?
I would use the same language that you have with school, what is it, school items in the policy?
Pertaining to matters, it's matters other, oh, what is it?
Schools, I think the public comment is related to school items only.
School items.
So I would say to comment upon school items.
Okay, so, let me just write this down. Thanks for everyone's patience, by the way. This is, this is stuff that's been looked at for a number of years, so. Okay, school agenda, school-related, and then looking down at number 10, you know, questions from members from the audience, commoner questions pertaining to, are we just, are we okay with that language being there, or is there a desire to have it say something different? Is that, should that be agenda-related items?
Do we currently have public guideline not relating to our school district? And if so, why?
I don't understand the question.
It says matters other than agenda items relating to the Austin School District.
Oh, other than agenda items, but still relating to the Austin School District? Is that how I'm supposed to say it?
Yes.
Okay. I was like, that makes no sense.
Okay.
This is, this is, by the way, again, I think we should get rid of it. It doesn't exist elsewhere. Counsel said, even if we make that adjustment in it, which I like, moving the thing up and be, talk about anything, there's still other things in here that made the attorney uncomfortable, frankly, made me, like, to me, I don't think you need a policy to set an agenda. I think you have the ability to do that in the current mechanism, so again, while I appreciate the idea of collaboration on this thing, to me, it should go. It's gonna, it's gonna create more potential issues by having codified, is my opinion, based on the conversation we had with counsel as well.
How does 2350, what we do, if it affects the resolution, if I'm using the right terminology, that we have to have equity on each agenda?
I mean, that's, that's the thing, it's not consistent with our own equity policy. That's not on there, and that's part of the problem, is that, are we, every time we have an initiative like that, we're in a position where we now have to go back and we have to revise this? Or are we gonna, as a board, decide how we're gonna set our agenda items? I mean, it, to me, if, the stuff that's on here, because we're not doing this stuff now, right? So, you know, we don't have our student representative here presenting to us, we don't always have a special recognition of student, staff, or community, we don't have a district-recognized parent group representative. So, all of this was uncomfortable when the attorney pointed out, you know, she's like, "Are you doing that? Are you doing that? Are you doing that? Are you doing that?" And she said, "You're okay, because there is this caveat at the end that says, if there's a consensus of the board, you don't have to." But to me, this is, it's limiting us, it's not reflective of what we're doing now, and I think it has the potential to be limiting rather than reflect the growth that the board goes through. So, I mean, there's a lot on, if, if the board wants to revise this whole thing, you know, I guess maybe at this point, we either revise the whole thing, or we scrap the whole thing. And there is a consensus to follow 1230, and seems like there's a consensus to move up a public comment section. So we can still do that and leave this alone, but you're right, Melissa, it's not reflective of what, what we do.
Well, I'll offer a different interpretation. So, it's generally should follow this, and we do have work session, special presentation, and equity is a work session item, right? So at the end of the day, it's not prescriptive, it's a framework. And I think that's what the intent of this is. And I do think it's good for boards to have student representatives. We have had student representatives in the past. I think we had some changes over the past year, it's been one of the first years we haven't, and, but I think, you know, having, having time on the agenda for parent groups and coming in to present, you know, we had Project Oconse come in, we had PTA come in, we had those things, and, you know, part of the reason that was there was so that they spoke earlier in the meetings at the end of the day versus just public comment. So I think there's a lot of experience in this. That's why I say I don't think I would lean on scrapping it. I think I would, you know, make the changes, but I'm one of seven.
You know, to further clarify my question, I was just wondering if that was taken into consideration from the perspective of counsel, when she was kind of interpreting there being no need for the 2350.
I mean, she said, "You, as a board, can come to a consensus and run your agenda in whatever way you want," and that's what this policy says, right? And the board has come to a consensus and they passed an equity policy, and we do our best to have the equity line item on every board meeting. So did she specifically say, "You don't have your equity item in here?" No, she did not. But she said, "I doubt you're following this like this at every single meeting."
And you move things up anyway.
That's the shell generally.
Right.
You move things up anyway, if like, a teacher's getting...
Yes, we move them up all the time. So that's why she was like, "You don't have to do, you don't have to revise this," right? Like, this was offered as a proposed revision in the sense that people wanted the consensus codified in some way. So, like, I'm, we're going in circles a little bit, I'm trying to get a sense of, is there an appetite to just leave this alone at this point? And agree that we have a consensus to do something a little bit different than what we're doing it? Or do people feel as though it should be codified somehow? If you weren't, let's, if you were not scrapping this, okay, let's start with the baseline, if we're not scrapping this, would you choose to revise it, or to just keep it as is and just have the understanding that we have a consensus? I would choose to revise it as we discuss, as amended as we just talked about, related to like school matters, or, instead of agenda items at the beginning. Okay. You don't... Right, so rather, six would read, "Questions regarding school-related items." Right. And 10 would read, "Questions pertaining to agenda-related items."
I think if you're doing public, if the intention's to do public comment at both the beginning and the end of the meeting, you're gonna give help into either one, right?
That's, we can do that, too?
I'm asking, that's, I'm not sure I sit in this consensus, and so I'm asking the consensus...
I don't know where we are.
I, I say we scrap it or rewrite the whole thing, because I'm not comfortable leaving things in there, to Frank's point that we're not doing in a policy. So I would say, let's move to vote to get rid of it, which to me, gives you the most flexibility in the shortest amount of time to get this, or take a holistic look and adjust it completely, that, that's what I would say. To me, it's an either-or. Tweaking around the edges at this point for something that's 16 years old doesn't make, makes much sense to me. Either get rid of it, or just reexamine it, add whatever you want to do it, and bring it back. But my vote still, if we take a vote on it right now, would be just scrap it.
Okay, just to be clear, the vote that is pending is on the revised version, which it sounds like we would then propose to amend further. There is no vote to scrap it at this point in time, right?
Can, can we make a motion to do that?
The motion on the floor either has to be decided or withdrawn.
Right, we have to decide the motion on the floor.
I would recommend revising six and 10 to basically, as we amended six, to basically say it's school-related items.
Okay. Austin School-related items or school-related items?
The policy says school-related items. I don't think you, I think you're in a tough spot with free speech in terms of what you could even stop.
That's fine.
We can't limit people from talking about...
Almost anything.
Don't we do that now? It says that you have to talk about school...
It has school-related items. We've had national school-related items, we've had state school-related items. We talk about a lot of national and state school-related items.
I'm only asking, because the policy as it is says Austin School District.
Mm-hmm. Before, any further dialogue on this before I take a motion to amend this? And then you vote however you're gonna vote, Rob, wherever way is fine. Okay. I'm gonna take a motion to amend policy, I'm sorry, yes, to amend policy 2350 as revised, so that item six reads, instead of "questions regarding agenda items," "questions regarding school-related items," and to amend section 10, which is, instead of "questions pertaining to matters other than agenda items relating to the Austin School District," it will read, "questions pertaining to agenda items." Take a motion on that. So moved.
I thought, I thought what was discussed just is that you were gonna have public comment on either one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I messed that up. I'm gonna walk that back, you're right. Okay, okay. I'm gonna take a motion to amend 2350 as follows. Section six will now read, "Comments from members of the audience. Members of the audience will be invited to comment upon or raise questions regarding school-related items." Number 10 will also read, "Comments from members of the audience. Members of the audience will be invited to comment upon or raise questions regarding school-related items." They will literally both say the same thing. Do I have any discussion on that proposed amendment? All in favor?
I gotta move it.
No, wait. Nobody's so moved it?
No.
Okay, I'll take a motion. Who's moving for it? Move.
Second.
Okay, now, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Okay, so this has passed as a first read. I know you wanna scrap it, okay? So I will figure out how to get that onto the next agenda, something for us to discuss. Okay?
But if it stays, it's with these amendments.
It's with these amendments. Okay, hang on, I'm just making a note. Okay. And if there are any proposed additional revisions to this, you know, if we wanna...
We can adopt it as a first read and still send it back to the policy committee.
Yeah, we can adopt it as a first read, send it back to the policy committee, if we wanna add equity in there, we add equity in there. There are just some if possible, if scheduled. We're just saying, we can, just if we have a trustee who wants to propose scrapping it, and we have trustees who want to propose amplifying it, nothing's off the table. Okay. Oh, look at this, we're almost at public comments in the meetings, but I still need a motion for 8.1, to adopt 8.7, which is 2350, board meeting procedures as amended. So moved.
Second.
Resolution to adopt board meeting procedures as a first reading, 2350 as amended. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Illy, we gonna be friends after tonight? Okay, all right. I'm gonna go back now to 8.5. I'll take a motion for 8.5.
So moved.
Second. 8.5, resolution to adopt policy 5420, Student Health Services as a first reading. Can I get a so moved?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
We did that.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Annie and I just did it. Oh, I didn't hear you. You did the moving, sorry, okay. I thought you were saying, "We just discussed this policy." I was like, "I've lost time." Like, I don't remember discussing this, okay. All right. Student Health Services as a first reading, I just wanna maybe give you like a little backdrop on this one. So essentially, this is making us, is allowing us to have trained staff who are not RNs in an emergency administer emergency epinephrine or glucagon via an auto-injector to a student with a patient-specific order and written parent consent for such medication. There was a law that came out that allowed this to be done, but this had to be put into policy first. Do I have that right, Alita?
Definitely.
Okay.
Definitely.
So is there any, any discussion about this at the board table? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll take a motion for 8.6. So moved.
Second.
8.6, resolution to adopt policy Exhibit 5420, Authorization for Administration of Medication as a First Read. This is just the authorization form. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Okay, guys, you got there, thank you. I now reached the second part of our public comment for the meeting, I'll take public comments in person first. There be no show of hands, I will ask our clerk if there's anyone raising their digital hand to provide us with public comment on any education-related item. Okay. No public comment this evening. We now reach the section of Board Discussion and Information. I believe you just got the share up front of the policy committee. So that was done. I did share with everybody a proposed description of a self-governance committee, and I, I can, you know, we can set up that committee tonight, we can discuss that description. Anyone have any appetite to do that? I can read it, would that help folks?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, hang on one second. All right, so, Self-Governance Committee. The Self-Governance Committee is intended to support the board and board leadership collaboratively with the goal of encouraging and assisting the board in maintaining compliance with the board handbook, monitoring board goals, assisting board leadership with tracking board-proposed initiatives and inquiries, aiding and ensuring timely response to outreach from the community, and promoting board development and self-evaluation. This committee will be comprised of either the board president or vice president and two trustees. The committee will collaborate with the superintendent and/or other staff designated by the superintendent as needed. The following checklist is a non-exhaustive list of the governance committee's best practices. Ensuring scheduling of and assisting in planning board retreats, ensuring scheduling of and aiding in completion of yearly board self-evaluation, tracking board-proposed initiatives raised during board dialogue, and facilitating follow-up as appropriate for items where board consensus has agreed to explore the initiative, assisting board leadership in ensuring timely response from the board to community outreach, encouraging board member continuing education by monitoring and advising of opportunities, and working with the superintendent and district clerk to facilitate access to learning events, proposing a calendar each August for the upcoming school year that tentatively schedules board development, or, yeah, board development events and deadlines in a manner consistent with goals established during the board's self-evaluation. events and deadlines in a manner consistent with goals established during the board self-evaluation. Thoughts?
What is the assisting board leadership and ensuring timely response from the board to the board? I generally know, I guess, what that's supposed to mean, but do you give a deeper explanation of the intent behind that?
Yeah, I think the intent behind that is that occasionally we have community outreach that falls through the cracks, and it's always good to have, I mean, I think we all generally do, we have another set of eyes to try to remind board leadership about that, but it doesn't, it doesn't always happen. It's very rare that it doesn't, but to have this as something that this committee in particular would be assisting in, I think, might be helpful.
I guess I would, any place where I think where we have board leadership, I would leave it at the board. I think just in terms of, I wonder if there's not areas where it expands the powers of the committee, and so I think it would be more in the spirit of something that's talked about here at the board table that people want to have done, and then the consensus reached that we do that. So I would, I would change assisting board leadership to assisting board and things like that.
Okay. Fine with me. I'm trying to think if I'm seeing it more than once.
It's kind of in your description, and then it's also broken out.
No. So. Other than that, which is easy enough to do, are we good with this type of a committee?
Do we need to outline how often it would meet?
I think that's up to the board.
I mean, does that need to be included in this? Is it an as needed? Is it a quarterly? Is it a...
I think normally Illy has a chart that she keeps separate, or like along with the descriptions.
Right. That's what I'm saying. What should we put in that line?
I don't think for a lot of committees we define that.
Okay.
So I think you want to be careful about defining it.
Okay. I mean, I think ideally it would meet at least every quarter, and then if there was an event coming up that required extra meetings and planning, as needed. Illy, if I am going to establish a committee tonight, do I take a motion to establish a committee, or we just establish it?
Because you should just send me a resolution.
A resolution? So we would prepare for the next meeting?
Or a resolution for the next meeting, so we can do it.
Okay. Okay, so then I'll revise this language and I'll send it to you, and do we have consensus here to put that as a resolution up? I mean, you can vote it down at the next meeting, but do we have a consensus to put it on?
Sure.
Okay. All right, thanks, everyone. I'm going to let others talk.
The most recent on board that was sent out, they talked about cell phones in schools, and, look, you have it. Do you also want to talk about this? While I don't necessarily want to lock away everyone's cell phones, I was wondering if the board would be interested in some kind of policy, or however this typically works about having cell phones without internet access, or cell phones with limited app capability. There are different apps like Brick and things. I don't know what would be the most feasible for the school district, but social media seems to not be great for our children and for our schools. And while I want to make sure that parents have the reassurance that they can reach their children at any time in the event of an emergency, I don't think kids need to be able to access everything that's on their phones. Thoughts?
But wait, there's more policy stuff. Yeah, we, I think we have 5695 as a cell phone use policy, so I was just going to just piggyback on that and basically say, no answer needed tonight, but does 5695 to policy committee, is that something that, and generally, I guess, maybe the question is more for Cabinet and Mary. Hi, I'm still here. If this district feels like, yeah, we're, there's not really a cell phone problem, we have it in 5695, which says, you're supposed to put it away during school hours and out of sight. If that covers it, great. If you think you need more, and then yes, go into more of the show-and-tell period, other things, then maybe it is something for policy committee to just dig back into if you think this needs more there based on what you're seeing on the ground.
We'd be happy to provide more information. Dr. Mary did his dissertation on this level of research very recently.
Nice.
Ooh, sounds like we have a new member of the policy committee.
We'll be happy to reach out to the staff and just get feedback.
I guess I'd be curious if there is an appetite for it, some sort of more restrictive cell phone policy. My gut says that we would meet strong parental resistance, but that there would be an appetite on the staff side. That's what my prediction would be, but I'd be curious, you know, from our, from our experts who already work for us, what they have to say about that, and if they feel like it would be a worthwhile endeavor, if it's a challenge they'd be willing to tackle, because I do think it would be an undertaking, then certainly I would be good with the policy committee taking a closer look at it once there's something to look at.
A fun fact is that I used those pouches in there at a show on Friday night. They took our phones and they put them in and couldn't access it until after the show was over. Just cool.
Is there like a, I think you can't take photography or something?
Yeah. You just couldn't, Apple watches were included too, everything.
It's the management of all of that, correct? Dr. Mary, that's the research.
There's more than enough research on this to look at, however, it's about implementation, right? The surgeon general has a warning about this and the distraction that cell phones have, certainly for all of us, not just students. But I would say, you know, looking at it from a secondary perspective, probably more so than an elementary perspective in terms of enforcement. So I agree with Mary. I would speak to the principals first, gather some data, and then revisit.
Melissa?
Yeah, I think this is also a conversation that probably is also suited, probably best suited for a code of conduct, because my, when I hear about, you know, like what we want to do as far as passing policies as far, and I'm not, this is not in opposition to the facts of, you know, the dangers of cell phones, but I'm just talking about strategically and procedurally. I think anytime we introduce certain policies that implement or affect students directly, making sure that they're applied in a consistent manner, is also, I think, another conversation that would have to happen as well. So I think, just putting it out there, that that's also a discussion that should be considered at the code of conduct level as well.
I also wanted to share, for transparency, Dr. Nova and I are going to meet about wait until eighth. I approached her as a parent, not as a board member, but I wanted everyone to know.
She updated me with that, but, you know, like philosophically, I'm with you. The devil is always in the details and how we go about enforcing that, and particularly if you have a, you know, and I just want to pull back what Melissa said too, consistency of application. You might find, you know, some kids wanting to use the, you know, Remind app, because that's really important, might have very heavily scheduled. So I think the point of wait until eight is about, at what point is it appropriate that we, you learn to use this in a thoughtful manner? When I was on the President's Council for, the Junior President's Council for Northern Westchester Hospital, we studied this for over a year, and the teenagers on that council talked about how they, they needed to self-regulate it, you know, put on different apps that had turned them down, even when they were trying to use their devices, their laptops for doing work, or just e-learning, that they turned off other things. So there's a lot of support for limiting access time, and, but yet, you know, then you've also got probably very overscheduled teenagers who use it consistently to stay on task, to stay on time, they use the Remind app a lot. So again, if it's an area, we'll reach out absolutely to the principals and get some feedback.
I'm curious what she has to say too, because wait until eight has traditionally just been parents opt-in. It's not like forcing anybody who doesn't want to do it.
Yes, exactly, 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 correct.
I mean, the idea around this all, like just solely like cell phones, or just any kind of device that you would access these things on?
Well, they have school issued devices on the website, so they shouldn't be using their devices to access their learning, because we do take care of that. Yeah.
Right, but there's like, to your point, there's like Apple Watches, is all that is a whole, so I don't know.
There is a whole list of approved things. There's like smart watches and phones that aren't actually smartphones and smart watches, but they look similar, they just don't have the apps and the capability that some of these other ones do.
And I think that wait until eight approach helps parents build consistency and support amongst other peers, because you don't want to be that one parent whose kid goes to you. Well, everybody else has it, and you want to be able to answer that in a way that you get support for that position.
Show them a list of all the people who don't have it too.
Exactly, exactly.
Going to be an interesting issue. You're going to see a lot of different viewpoints. You know, the city eliminated cell phones, and there was quite a backlash to that, so, you know, this is not a simple issue.
Yep, correct.
Just for clarity's sake, I'm not saying that we should remove cell phones, because I understand with today's safety concerns, parents want to have access to their kids whenever they want, and I can understand that for sure.
I mean, it may well be that we look at this issue and say, we're not ready to touch it yet.
That could be included.
You know?
We should hear from, we should hear from our people in the buildings and the administration and get that, and I would tend to think this is a code of conduct item versus a board policy thing, but...
But I love the education piece around it, that parents can say no, that there are different tools, there are different devices, and just building awareness about that.
Any other board dialogue?
And just one other quick one, same paper in the policy, AI policy, so this feels like one, a policy committee, or if you're working on it. What's interesting about this article though, most of it was like, how to basically make sure the kids aren't cheating, but I do think you need something around like, what's the district want to use around it to codify as well, but this probably feels like another good one. At some point, policy committee, very busy policy committee to maybe work on.
We agree.
I think there's, there's a professional development coming up related to AI.
Like board PD?
For board PD. I feel like I signed up for it, now I can't rem, I've been signing up for every AI-related professional development as a teacher also, so I'm like, oh, AI, signing up, because I want to learn more about that, I'm interested in that as a topic, and I feel like I am signed up for one. So I'll look through my email, and if I see it, I'll forward it to the rest of the board so that we can, you know, it feels unwise to create a policy about it if we don't understand it. So, just in the name of professional development, when you said it, it dinged in my head as something that we have.
Oh, it's NISBA events. Are your policies keeping pace with AI? Is that the one? Thursday, April 11th.
Thank you. Yes.
Oh, if we had the governance committee, they could alert us all to that. I, I know that there is a faith-based housing bill that is percolating, and I know, Mary, you were going to speak to another organization on that, and I'm wondering if you had any recommendations that our legislative committee take a look at it?
There's an upcoming meeting on May 3rd with the superintendents and our elected officials, and my position on this, my opinion, given my background and other ways, that Westchester and Austin in particular have done really great things about building affordable housing for many individuals. There have been tragedies when people bypass local zoning or speed-through zoning in terms of, you know, what can happen and how that can happen. It takes away local control and local governance issues. It needs a deeper dive and a deeper understanding, and I don't understand the need to push it, given the level of housing that's occurring here in Westchester and here in Austin. So, and again, we have zoning rules for a reason. We have fire protection, we have other things, and we should go through all of those protocols to begin with, but the spirit of local control, and then more information around what's involved in these. You know, earlier this evening, we talked about tax-exempt property, and many communities and areas have, once a religious organization that comes off the tax rolls, how much of that addresses when a development is built, is there a church, a house of worship or something part of it? There's a lot in this that needs to be considered, and this showed up very, very quickly on everyone's map. So I would like everyone to pump the brakes on that, spend time to talk about it and look into it, because the big question is, what are the unintended consequences associated with this? My two cents on that one.
Okay. I guess you'll, I think, I'm wondering, at some point, is there going to be a time where we would want a recommendation from our legislative committee about putting out like a position statement or a letter or something? So I just wanted to kind of be on everyone's radar.
We also got, this might be a topic that would be good for our legislative advocacy stuff when we have the business meeting, if, in the fall.
Right.
As something to put forth for NISBA to advocate on, because it's not just our area, is it? Is it just our, what's considering this?
No.
It's a state issue, right? So it sounds like the legislative committee should probably meet with Mary or designee and basically go through the list of stuff, and I would say, you hit that with West Putt at the end in September, and then you get ready for, try to build up some of the few people to do something for NISBA, so more districts on a name make more sense, so we should have a meeting to plan that and amongst other things. So.
All right, so, who do I, do I reach out to Nicole or Illy to schedule a committee meeting? Illy, would you be the one doing that? Okay. All right, awesome, thank you. Lots of questions for you tonight, but I'm going to put that on your to-do list. Do you have any further dialogue?
Okay. I will take a motion to enter into executive session to discuss contract negotiations under the collective bargaining requirements of the Taylor Law, employment history of a particular individual or individuals, and the BOE session will not be returning to the public session. Or I'm sorry, was that, was I supposed to be...
Yeah, the board of education number is returning to public.
I want to continue the action.
For any action.
For any action. No action will be taken. I need a so moved.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention.
We voted on that at one point.